Here.
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, to approve the form of meeting agenda. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Carried. We have a consent agenda with numerous items contained therein. Is there a motion to adopt? Strike that. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Bennett?
Yes, thank you. Items four E, four L, and four N, please.
M or Mary?
N as in Nancy.
Nancy. All right. I also had E, so I'm glad you pulled that one. And with the exception of four E, L-
L, please, Your Honor.
And N? Which one?
L, Your Honor.
Yep, we've got that one covered.
Oh, you got L?
Yeah, we got L.
Okay, E, E J L N, or just E L N?
E L N.
Okay.
All right. With the exception of E L N, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion, a second, to approve the balance of the consent agenda with the exception of E, L, and N. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Carried. With respect to the website policy, which is four E, Member Bennett?
Yes, thank you. I have a question regarding the, there is some language that I think could be just a little simpler, but my substantive question is regarding the list, the bullet points of organizations that the city will not provide links to websites for. Bullet point one, two, three, four states political organizations or other organizations whose primary mission is advocating a position on or conducting discussions of local, state, or federal political issues. I have no problem with the advocating on. I have a question about or concern about limiting connections with organizations that conduct discussions of, because even the Chamber of Commerce would be a good entity and point which spends a lot of time in service to the community, but also definitely follows and discusses political issues on a local, state, and federal level. So what I would prefer it to state is everything but or conducting discussions of. So political organizations or other organizations whose primary mission is advocating a position on local, state, or federal political issues.
Any other comments on that?
So you're looking for a narrower definition so that something-
So you excluding the Chamber of Commerce by that?
No, I'm not wishing to, but I'm also not wishing to exclude other organizations like the Chamber which aren't named as the Chamber is as being capable of having the linked website. So there are other organizations in our community that also have discussions on, some of them are city, for instance, boards and commissions. So that would be covered because they're city entities.
Would you read your proposed language again, please, on that bullet point?
Yes. It's bullet point one, two, three, four.
Right.
And it would be deletion only of one, two, three, four words, or conducting discussions of. And it would then read political organizations or other organizations whose primary mission is advocating a position on local, state, or federal political issues.
Would that, so that would allow the league, for instance, to be included?
Yes.
Not only just for candidate forms, but on all the community discussions that they have?
Right, but it, but an advocate-
But they ultimately advocate a position on some of them.
But has to be their primary-
They do, but so does the Chamber of Commerce. And what, again, it's primary purpose. The primary purpose is another qualifier that's already in there. Yeah. So comfortable with the word "primary purpose" remaining because, again, that provides another qualifier.
All right. I have a question for my colleagues. As I was reading this, some of it was a little bit more understandable as I get onto the second page of the proposed policy. But on the first page, in the second full paragraph from the top, "To qualify for inclusion on the city's websites or one of its social media pages, a linked website must complement, supplement, enhance, or add to the information and/or city services provided on a city edina's websites or social media pages." So my annotation there was, who makes that judgment? And then we go over to page two where it says the review is conducted by the Communications and Technology Services Department, and the final say rests with the city manager with respect to the external link issue. So I'm just wondering, is that, is that application process with no appeal process built in something that this council is comfortable with? The city manager has a final say in the communication, in working in conjunction with the communications department as to whether the city will provide a link to a website or not?
She says no.
Seems like it's worked okay so far. Any concerns that you've had that have arisen, either-
No, I-
-from the communication department standpoint or from the-
I think the other way to ask that question is, do you want every request to link to our website to come to the city council for our council action?
That would be a no.
Okay.
The only reason I would suggest some other mechanism beyond you is if you're facing significant issues that you can't deal with. The answer, it sounds like it's no.
It's not.
Okay.
The answer is no, you're right.
And then I was wondering if, in the, in the section that Member Bennett was just working in, it says, the preamble sentence is, "The city will not provide links to websites for," and then you go into this delineation of websites, you know, or went links that cannot be, where we will not provide links to certain websites. And I was just wondering if there was a more general statement that we could make there as to the sort of standard we might use for not providing links to websites, and then use the bulleted items as examples of the general rule. But I don't have an idea on what the general rule ought to be, but it did strike me that that was probably something worthy of at least a comment.
I have to be honest with you, in the 12 years we've had this policy, I don't think we've ever turned down a link. Sometimes when an applicant requests the application, once they read, you know, if it's a business, they recognize they're not eligible and they don't actually submit an application for consideration.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Folks comfortable with the recommendation of Member Bennett to strike the words in the fourth bullet point, second line down, "or conducting discussions of," would be the words that would be stricken. Communications department comfortable with that?
I, it's your call.
Manager Neil, any thoughts?
I'm comfortable with that.
Roger?
All right. Do we have a motion relative to this matter with the change made in the website links policy by Member Bennett?
I will move.
Second.
And a motion, a second, to adopt the website links policy, the amended website links policy with the deletion noted. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Carried.
Thank you.
And then we had L, which is the proposed amendment of the code concerning taxicabs and taxicab drivers. Both Member Bennett and Member Sprague had that matter. And Member Sprague, why don't we go to you?
I'm going to find my notes, so go ahead and give it to Member Bennett, and then I'll, you can come back to me.
Okay.
Because I have a, I have a list of things.
All right.
Okay. I was able to find my notes right before the meeting started. I have questions regarding chiefly three parts. I have questions about why we eliminated the exemption. That's Section 12, 319. And then moving back up into the document, I have a question about what is meant by vehicle for hire under Section 12, 315, so line one of the additional language, any vehicle for hire. And then that relates to the added language down below, transportation network service. And the question is, are we inadvertently doing something with car, ride-share services like Uber, Lyft, or Sidecar that we don't mean to be doing? That's the question.
So Mr. Nolan is not here this evening?
No, I'm going to, Chad's prepared.
Chad, do you have a, do you feel comfortable?
City attorney draft this?
City attorney. City attorney draft this ordinance.
First, the exemption language was eliminated because it's not, no longer needed with the change, since you are, if you're licensed anywhere in the state, you don't, you don't need a license from the city. It used to be this, say, Bloomington, St. Louis Park, with the Metropolitan Airport Commission. So it's no longer needed. It's redundant.
Are you talking about 316 or 319?
319.
319, okay.
It's redundant.
All right. What about the, what about the Uber and the other, what's the other?
Lyft and Sidecar.
Yeah. Are we doing anything that inhibits that type of operation? And if so, is there a good reason for it?
So under this, Uber can operate, Lyft can operate, Sidecar, anything like that can also operate within a city.
Along with the goal, which was to allow some senior pickups and things like that.
Assuming they qualify as a charitable nonprofit transportation vehicle, I assume they would.
So the operation of Section 12, 316 is to allow the operation of a taxicab within the city if it's licensed in any other political subdivision in the state or by the Metropolitan Airports Commission. The action of 12, 315 definitions is that actually Uber, Lyft, and Sidecar, or whatever else gets invented as names for this kind of service, would then be covered by this, not required to have a license to operate, but allowed to operate, again, by the definition of transportation network service.
Correct.
Okay.
My only question was, is it necessary to have the documentation requirement from the city clerk? Is that an onerous requirement, or are you comfortable with that?
I believe that it would be- I believe it would not be an onerous requirement.
Okay.
And the reason for that, it's certainly optional on your part. Another type of organization that is not a nonprofit could come in and use it, and you wouldn't have any regulation of it. You wouldn't, this keeps tabs on it, so you know that what's functioning meets your requirements.
I have a couple of things.
Member Brendel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
319, Section 12 dash 319, a charitable nonprofit transportation vehicle is exempt from the regulations set forth in this ordinance. And so I, upon presentation of the 501(c)(3) status of the entity, so I contacted ITN, which is a 501(c)(3) seeking to operate in Edina, and looking at the taxicab ordinances in the larger cities around us, they're all very specific about insurance, about vehicle condition, about seat belts for every passenger, et cetera. So that's really in 16, when you say that issued by 16 and 17, that they're complying with the taxicab ordinances of the cities around us and the Metropolitan Airports Commission. That's really some of the things that they've already had to satisfy in order to have that license. So by having that license, we're saying they can operate here. Now, being exempt from that as a nonprofit organization, my questions were about insurance, since that's a requirement by ordinance for a taxicab. Is it a requirement for a nonprofit organization? And it is. ITN, for example, which is the organization that we are acting, I think, in for, in, you know, in for, for, in order for them to operate in Edina, they require insurance. ITN has insurance over and above the insurance carried by the driver. They do require a vehicle inspection. The, there are no tips allowed on the rides to an ITN driver. And ITN drivers may be volunteer. ITN drivers in the middle of the night, for example, or in the, in a case of, of an emergency, they may be paid. They are not paid by the passenger. They are paid by ITN. And so in, through a prepaid account that's kept by, by the organization. But I did want to stipulate some of those things. When I read this, I thought, I want to understand, if we go to an extent of protecting the passenger in a taxicab, it would be nice to know to what extent we go to protect a passenger in a, in a ride like this. I mean, many of these, these are private individuals who are offering to drive their car, to drive someone where they need to go. And, and that's, and that's great. And so I just want to be sure that when we put this in ordinance as part of a taxicab ordinance, that we have that same protection for the passengers with this.
Member Bennett?
One suggestion-
Now go back to-
Sure. One suggestion is that in 12, 317, driver's license required. If the following language would be added, "No person shall drive a taxicab or for a transportation network service or company within the city without possessing a valid taxi, oops, taxicab driver's license." Okay. Because what I'm trying to get to is, if a driver is licensed in the state of Minnesota, then they have to have proof of insurance in order to get that license. It doesn't go to that additional insurance, Member Brendel, that you're describing, but it does go to at least a familiarity with the laws of the state and, so-
The additional- The additional insurance I'm describing doesn't apply here because it applies with the nonprofit organization, which is exempt from this.
But the nonprofit organization, anyone driving for them is not exempt from the general laws of the state of Minnesota.
Right.
You can't drive without a driver's license, and you can't drive without insurance.
Right. They just don't need a taxi driver's license.
No.
And they don't need a taxi license.
Correct.
Okay.
So this should be fine?
Yes.
Well, but the question that you've raised is, should, should we, as a city, be requiring certain levels of insurance coverage for anyone that's transporting people, whether it's for hire or on a, on a charitable basis? That's what I heard you asking.
Yes, and I did not ask about the specific insurance amounts that are required by ITN, for example, or Veep in Bloomington. But, but they are required to have their own vehicle insurance, and then ITN has insurance over and above that.
Sure. The organization wisely ought to have adequate insurance coverage, but your question is, should we be kind of backstopping that and making sure that they do?
Making sure that they do.
If they're transporting people into or within our, you know, either into and out of our community or within our community.
Right.
That's your question. Roger, any, any cities you represent require certain levels of insurance coverage for that type of an operation, whether it's a taxicab operating for hire or nonprofit?
Not to my knowledge, no.
The taxicab-
You rely upon state law. Very few cities license taxis.
Okay.
Like, you had St. Louis Park before, they don't license taxis.
Right.
It's just a different model. There's also state, you know, overnight stay models where you're staying in someone's home for a fee. And I don't, I don't know that those are regulated by the same hotel laws. I mean, this is such a new model that is arising, but it's consumer-driven. So I think we should go with, with that model until-
The Airbnb model is what you're referring to.
Yeah, Airbnb, but for Uber, it's the same thing. It's a consumer-driven model that, obviously Uber and Lyft and these companies, in order for them to retain their, their brand and their, their quality ratings from the customers, have to have, have to regulate their drivers somehow. But the state of Minnesota is the backfiller here and not the cities, is what I'm hearing from our attorney.
Should, Member Sprague, do you want to move this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, with respect to action item four L, which is the ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the code concerning taxicabs and taxicab drivers. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Carried. Next one was Member Bennett, four N, which is a proposed resolution authorizing us to make a grant application to Hennepin County for potential TOD infrastructure planning. Member Bennett?
Could we have Economic Development Director Nurendorff present on this, please?
Sure. Or, yeah, Manager Neil?
Or Manager Neil.
Yeah, either one.
Sure. Happy to do it. The resolution tonight is into, is in support of a grant application to Hennepin County. They have several grant programs. This particular one is a TOD infrastructure planning grant. The grant program, the applications are due this month, and there's two basic phases or two different types of projects that they like to fund. One is private development that actually advances the goals of transit-oriented developments, which is more intense nodes of mixed use. The second element is where we're applying, and that's for infrastructure. Ideally, Hennepin County likes to, to help fund real projects and, and have them constructed, but they're also open to advanced planning so that they can look forward to the next generation of, of transit and transportation infrastructure. And that's where we're focusing this, this particular grant request. This follows up a presentation to the city council back in May. We had colleagues from the University of Minnesota Metropolitan Design Center here, also colleagues at the Cunningham Group Architects and Planners, where they advance a concept that's been used in Minneapolis and other cities throughout the, throughout the country to actually bridge over a depressed portion of a freeway. And that's the condition that we find at Highway 100. The colleagues over at, at the Metro Design Center in Cunningham put some very initial concepts together. We presented those at a work session in, in May. And then as a follow-up, we met, we went and met with MINDOT to see their thoughts. Is this something that they're interested in? Is it something they're opposed to? And in general, something that they're interested in, in investigating further. The recommended next step after meeting with MINDOT was to really take some of these conceptual drawings and start to dig a little bit more deeply and really enter into more of a true exploratory phase to see what could happen, what's the feasibility of it, what's the financial impact, and what does it look like to the community? So this grant request would solicit funds from Hennepin County to share in this exploratory phase of this concept. Support from Hennepin County is, is warranted, in my opinion, because the intersection of Vernon, 50th, Highway 100, Eden, has city roads, county roads, and state roads all intersecting in one. So after talking with the grant manager at Hennepin County, he suggested that we do continue to move forward with this, and that's what we're advancing tonight, seeking a resolution that would then be submitted to Hennepin County to show city council support for this request.
Member Bennett?
Yes, thank you. So this would add significantly to the density of the area and to the proposed parking in the area, above and beyond what the framework that this council approved in April of 2012 was looking at?
Possibly. Yes, this, this explores a concept that was studied back in 2010 by the first Grand View Steering Committee, and it was dismissed at that point. It was felt to be too big, pie in the sky, multi-million dollar investment. But since that time, more and more cities have successfully implemented this. MINDOT is considering doing something near downtown east of Minneapolis. The city of Minneapolis has already successfully done it. So the waters have changed a little bit. When I spoke with the grant manager, I used two levels of, of measures of success for this. One is having the right project, and the other is doing it well. So there's still a lot of exploration. What is the right project? How big is it? How dense it is? Is it? What does it look like? And that's the type of thing where, right now, we just have general concepts. We need to dig deeper and find out, what is the scale of project that fits?
Sure. But again, it's significantly greater in density. I note from the presentation that was made in, what was the original date? Anyway, that it was in May, at the May 20th work session. At that time, they were talking about eight-story buildings and, I think, 1,700,000 square feet of developable space based with that eight, eight-story average. So this is not what the public had to see when they were commenting in April 2012.
That's correct. This is a brand-new concept. It, it is denser in the fact that it could potentially add eight acres of space that's currently MINDOT right-of-way that could potentially be buildable space.
Sure. Now, I also note that the actual resolution, although the staff report refers to the presentation at the May 20th work session, and I have a copy of that PowerPoint, this resolution actually refers to a concept plan dated July 25, 2014. Where is that plan?
It's the same plan. It was redated to, that's the date that we met with MINDOT. So the plan that was presented in, in May, I think it was about 30 sheets, and as I recall, it had many, many example, many, many renderings of the Minneapolis site at downtown east. And then they transitioned to Edina. When we met with MINDOT, we, we extracted all the portions and all the references to Minneapolis and only kept the 12 sheets that are really specific to Edina. It's the same content.
And who paid for that design or the presentation in May that's been redated July?
So far, the Metro Design Center and Cunningham have offered the service pro bono.
Okay. And then this is an application for $100,000 in grant funds?
That's correct.
And the city is required to match them, correct?
Not required to match, but in order to advance our, our odds of securing the grant, we felt that it was necessary to have some skin in the game.
And one of the, one of the likely recipients or intended recipients of that grant money to work on this concept worked with the previous $100,000 or $105,000 grant that the city obtained, I believe, in January of 2010, December 2009?
The Cunningham Group has been involved in Grand View since about 2011, yes.
Sure. And for that $105,000 for which Cunningham was paid, I know we've got the framework, which is not a small area plan, it's a framework. Did we get any other deliverables? I know that they've been requested. I know that there were subs, other architects and design agencies that were paid that to work to be part of that consortium. But I, as a council member, have never seen a deliverable from any of those other organizations or consultants.
You know, I'll defer to, to our Community Development Director Kerry Teague regarding those deliverables. That was a planning department project.
Sure.
We don't have any, anything else from any of those subs. Cunningham paid those subs themselves. There was no, nothing direct-
Or paid them with city grant money, or city obtained grant money.
No, they weren't paid by the city. They were paid by the Met Council. We got a grant from the Met Council.
Right. We obtained the grant, and the grant was for a small area plan. It funded the work on the framework, but there were components to that framework that I've not seen, and it sounds like no one else on this body has seen either.
Manager Neil?
I would like to add a different nuance to the, to this discussion. I think that the lid proposal as it stands right now is still pretty speculative. And while it has a range of scenarios, there hasn't been one scenario that has been defined as this is what it's going to take to make it work. So one of those scenarios is the, is the density that, that Councilmember Bennett talked about just a little bit ago. Another, another possible outcome is, is more green space, much like you see with Longfellow Gardens in, in South Minneapolis over by Minnehaha Falls. So that's an example of a lid project, maybe, you know, I would judge to be similar in scope that has, that has not led to any increase in density. It's led it to a complete increase in green space. I would guess there's probably going to be a mix of, of green space and density, but, but I think it's too early to say that it's going to go one way or the other here.
Well, the one over by Minnehaha Falls was related to the Highway 55 project, was not-
It was, yep.
Okay. In, in closing, on my line of questioning, I just, I think that to commit this amount of public resource, half of 1% of our general fund, to a study that is proposed to increase density far beyond the advice of the- far beyond the advice of the residents and citizens who've looked at this so far, I think there are opportunity costs, and I oppose this.
Do you want to mention the source of funds here from the city side? Potential source of funds?
Sure. The anticipated source is to tap into the remaining funds from the Grand View, Grand View 1, Tiff District. That district was established back in the 90s. It expired in 2010. There's still close to $400,000 of incremental taxes that were collected. This is one of the eligible expenses to help spend down that fund and actually put those dollars to work.
All right. Member Sprague and Member Swenson.
Can I refer you to one part of your report? It says, "In addition to the need for additional engineering and planning, this concept will also require thorough community review to determine both the financial feasibility and the appropriateness for the Grand View area." "This grant application should not be interpreted as a full commitment to construct the envisioned highway LID, but rather as a next step in a measured study of a creative community building strategy." Talk to me a little bit about that.
In my response, someone also addresses Member Bennett's comments and questions. When the architects at the Metro Design Center put a preliminary sketch together, it showed fairly high-density, fairly blase buildings. It showed boxes, essentially. And with this proposal to advance it and to actually determine the feasibility, in our opinion, it's not just financial feasibility, it's community support. So if, in order to be financially feasible, you've got to build a whole flock of new high-rises, my guess is that's not going to muster community support. And somewhere in the middle, there's a balance. Manager Neil had mentioned that as well. So part of this study is to find out what that balance is, what fits for the community, and what fits for the next generation of this area.
And then, in terms of the allocation of funding, are we wedded to the people who presented this? Or could we use or leverage part of the team that we select through the RFI process?
A grant application does not lock us into any binding contract with any particular consultant, so we can always choose who we use to explore this.
I just want to know that it would be an option if we can collaborate with the RFI partner we select this evening because they're two, obviously, related planning processes. And transit is too important to the future of Edina, having been left out of the southwest LRT corridor. This is too important to me not to at least do an exploratory venture.
I think since we just went out on a RFI for the Grand View area, we would be foolish not to look at this area. It touched on different parts of the original Grand View study with a bridge going across. I know that lids can't be built on, so they have to stay green or some way. You can't even put large trees on them because of the nature of how they are. I know we've talked about changing the egress to Highway 100, and we would need MINDOT involved in that anyway, and we would need a really sound plan for that. I know we've talked about having park-and-rides and, you know, I'm not, you know, we don't, park-and-ride could be part of the underneath part of this project and some of it on top. So I don't see a row of 18- and 12-story apartment buildings going along here. I see an opportunity to flush out the rest of this district, and why wouldn't we do it now?
Member Rendell.
Thank you. I think this is pretty low risk. It doesn't commit us to anything. Thank you. And it lets us use some grant monies outside of our own to develop a concept to help us understand if we can connect this government plaza here to the Grand View site that we are hoping to develop. And so I think the information that we get from this will help us to understand, number one, financially, is this even possible? And a good idea? And number two, is it going to be, will it contribute? How will it contribute to the Grand View development? And if, in fact, it contributes well enough to give that area more than the 3.3 acres that it is, I think those are things that we would like, I personally, would like to learn. The price there has to be right. It can't be too high. It can't be ridiculous. The density can't be ridiculous. This needs to be a green plaza. This needs to be a space that is relief between Government Plaza and that. The highway that we have along Highway 100 is, it was designed for an area that really never developed the way it was anticipated. Vernon Avenue was supposed to be Highway 169. It was supposed to be a highway. So the design of Highway 100 with the number of exits that are on and off entrances and exits that we have in a residential area with the really medium volume of traffic that we have for that area, it's really overdesigned for the roads as they exist today. So this would help us to get across an area where, right now, you're really, you're hard-pressed to walk across Highway 100, whether it's at Eden Avenue or Vernon Avenue. So it would be a welcome addition if all the other factors come into place positively. And I think possibly, I hope, that's some of the information that can be gotten out of this. And if we can use somebody else's money to get the answer, that would be just fine. So.
I'll move this issue.
Second?
Second.
Got a motion in the second to adopt Item 4N, which is the resolution authorizing a grant application to Hennepin County for some TOD infrastructure planning for what's become known as the Edina LID. Green space that could exist between the Eden Avenue Bridge and the Vernon Avenue Bridge connecting the Government Plaza to the Grand View District. Any further discussion? Member Bennett?
Thank you. I appreciate my colleagues' comments. I would feel more comfortable with this if we had, if we and the public had received more for the first $100,000. And I also understand that this is grant money, but it's still public money. And so continue to be unable to support this.
All right. Any further comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay.
Nay.
Carried. And now we are on to Mr. Gilgenbach, as I recall. The next portion of the agenda, which is the only item in special recognitions and presentations this evening, the Speak Up Edina presentation, and you're going to talk about Community Gardens. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the City Council. Like the mayor said, I'm Jordan Gilgenbach, Communications Coordinator of the city. I'm here tonight to present the August discussion on Speak Up Edina on Community Gardens. Again, Speak Up Edina is our civic engagement website that we've used since mid-2012. And we've hosted a variety of topics on there, from the neighborhood discussions to anything on residential redevelopment, to, most recently, things on food trucks, beekeeping, the 64 rule, et cetera. Like I said, in August, our discussion was focused around Community Gardens, and we asked the following questions on the discussion. Should the city add more Community Gardens? If the city were to add more, where should they be? And do you currently use a Community Garden? If so, which one? And if not, would you if more were available? The discussion was opened from July 31st to September 2nd, and we got a total of 59 comments on the site. Just shy of 700 visitors came for a total of, just under 1,000 total visits. And we almost got to 4,000 page views for the month. About 40% of the people came more than once, and the majority of the respondents were from Edina. Looks like there was one in St. Paul and possibly one down in Eagan. Here's a summary of the comments that were made. Most of them were in support of Community Gardens, anything saying that it promotes the healthier lifestyle and the green theme. There's already a popularity with the waitlist that's at the current Community Garden. There's obviously demand for it. Comments were made that location is important for choosing whether or not to use a Community Garden, such as the ability to walk or bike to one instead of driving. How Community Gardens can be used as an educational opportunity, how they can build relationships, not only with your family, but with your neighbors and others in your community. A lot of people noted that they've met a lot of people that they never would have otherwise, and they've fostered those relationships. Somebody said that if you wanted a garden, maybe put it in your own yard instead of using a public one, noting that many people have yards. One person commented that maybe we need to review our current Community Garden before expanding. Anything from renewal rates, abandoned plots, noting that there were some abandoned plots this summer, and other issues such as drainage. The city could also encourage apartments or condo owners or landlords to add Community Gardens on the grounds or even on rooftops and create those green roofs that are becoming ever more popular. Placing gardens near more high-density areas, more in the Southdale area, more toward the apartment buildings throughout the city. Possibly expanding what's currently there, elevating plots so it's more accessible to all. Some people can't get down on all fours to be able to dig in the Community Gardens, so making those elevated more could be helpful, and that they're just an overall valuable asset to the community. Here's just a list of some of the possible locations that were noted for additional Community Gardens in the city in addition to expanding what's currently there. A lot of parks throughout the city, residents think that could be used. Somebody also noted that schools could use Community Gardens, though there are some schools right now that have gardens on them, though I believe that they're being used for more of an educational purpose than a community purpose. The next discussion for September, let's not get to December, is on Community Events, which is open till October 1st. We're looking to see what residents think about the city holding an annual community festival to celebrate Edina. Currently, we have the two art fairs and the Fourth of July Parade, which are all very well-attended, but don't necessarily focus on Edina itself. So creating that community event, sort of like Hopkins Raspberry Festival, or I think that's what it's called, or the Minneapolis Annual Aquatennial, something that celebrates the community itself. If we did that sort of a thing, what kind of festival should it be? And what sort of events or amenities would need to be included to entice people to actually go to it? And like I said, that'll be open through October 1st. And those comments can all be made on speakupedina.org, and I will stand for questions.
Questions for Jordan?
No, but it was great to read. Thank you.
Yeah. Interesting. Every month, interesting things that you're working on for us and helping the community on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a proclamation for Constitution Week. Clerk Mangan, wondering if we could handle that during mayor and council comments? It'd be a good place to handle it, probably? All right. We've got one public hearing this evening, and it involves the consideration of the vacation of a public right-of-way adjacent to a project called the Continental Apartments Project, which we granted preliminary approval of several weeks ago. And Director Milner has this request by the applicant for the vacation of this easement. Director Milner?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. As you stated, this is a vacation request for 7151 York Avenue. The applicant is Masawa Capital. It's located in the southeast part of Edina, near the Southdale area. As you mentioned, in front of the Continental Apartments for the construction of the second building that was approved by council earlier this year. The request is to vacate the 10 feet, the easterly 10 feet, the 10-foot utility easement. There is a 30-foot easement in that area from the back of curb into the property. They would like to, they're proposing to vacate the 20-foot utility easement. The city utilities are located on the west side of York Avenue. The water main, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer are all on the west side of the right-of-way. We do have a fiber optic line that's underneath the sidewalk that would remain in the 20-foot remaining easement. We've reached out to the private utility companies to get their input. CenterPoint Energy has no objection to this. Excel Energy does have a power line around, in that 30-foot easement. We would, if the council still chooses tonight, I would make that approval of this vacation contingent on the applicant to get that line located, to see exactly where that is within that 30 feet. We don't anticipate it being that far out into the property, but we should still do that before we completely vacate this 10-foot easement. Comcast and CenterPoint, there was no response on this vacation consideration. So as I mentioned, the city would retain the westerly 20 feet of the easement area, 20 feet from the back of curb. So we recommend vacating the requested 10 feet contingent on a location of that Excel power line, power line by the applicant. So we recommend council approve Resolution 2014-101. I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Questions for Director Milner at this point in time? All right. This is something we discussed in conjunction with the preliminary approval. And I think you did mention that staff recommends approval of the resolution?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. All right. Stand by, and I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony. So the public hearing is open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and address the council with respect to this proposed vacation of a utility easement? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing, there's a motion to close the public hearing in the second discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. Post say nay. Carried. All right. Do we have a motion regarding this matter?
So moved. Second?
Got a motion in the second regarding the Resolution 2014-101. And council comment, Member Bennett.
Director Milner, is there, does this increase green space in any way? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other comments, questions? All right. Favorable majority vote of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay.
Nay.
Carried. And now we're going to move on to the community comment portion of the agenda. We've had at least one submission from a resident at the beginning of our council meeting. Is there anyone in the council chambers that wishes to come forward and address the council with regard to a concern that they might have? And we will take you in due course here. And you'll need a handheld microphone if you're going to use that.
Is it all right if I step off to the side?
Sure.
Put this here, then? Thank you.
Sure. We'll get that appropriately magnified, and then you can make your presentation from the side podium. Make sure you give us your name and address. And as you know, from having been at the council chambers before, you'll have three minutes, and you'll get a yellow warning light when you have 30 seconds left. Thank you.
Lori Groats, 5513 Park Place. 5509 Park Place to the north will be torn down and a spec home will be built. Our properties sit several feet below 5509, but we are not impacted by drainage from them as they have a drainage system in their rear yard that takes the storm water to Park Place. City engineering staff has visited the site on June 30th and August 29th. The system has a catch basin measuring 30 inches at the southeast corner of the house. The drain tile runs along the south side of the house behind a block retaining wall. The catch basin and drain tile collect and divert storm water directly to Park Place. The city of Edina, Ken Roslin, required the catch basin and drain tile to be installed in 1997 to take the water to Park Place. The house was sold in 2007. In order to control the volume of water in the rear yard, the new owner found it necessary to bury and tile three roof drains in the rear yard to the catch basin, sump pump number one to the catch basin, sump pump number two to Park Place, and two north roof drains to Park Place. The survey of existing site conditions does not show this drainage system, nor does the proposed storm water management plan. Engineering staff wrote in his August 5 review of 5509 Park Place that this drainage path from 5509 Park Place is through private property to the south, my house, 5513 Park Place, and then to Park Place or Dever Drive. This is not true. Staff has seen the site. The water at 5509 Park Place goes to Park Place and not into our yard. Please correct this. Staff emailed the builder a copy of this engineering review, and in doing, has essentially told the builder that he can drain his water into our yard. Staff has granted an illegal Staff has granted an illegal drainage easement on our property for the benefit of the builder with no notification or compensation to us. The proposed drainage plan will not contain and divert the water to Park Place as it currently does and as was previously mandated by the city, but will direct water onto our property without our permission. We do not have a sump pump and drain tile. We cannot manage this volume of water. The new home needs to keep the catch basin and drain tile, gutters, and buried roof and sump drains. Staff has told us that we will not get more water than we currently get. We don't get water now. Please keep a hold on the demo permit until the illegal drainage easement is removed. The proposed drainage plan shows water going to Park Place and not into our yard. All permit requirements have been satisfied, including accurate and complete surveys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Groats.
And I would ask that you please enter this into the public record. Thank you for listening.
It will be entered into the record, and we will follow up on it with staff.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Groats. Saw at least one other hand out in the audience that had an issue. Oh, Mr. Groats is going to, all right.
He has another call.
Yes, he, well, that's just fine.
Jim Groats, 5513 Park Place, mayor and members of the city council. I have asked my documents for 5508 Dever Drive be handed to you before the start of the meeting and entered into the public record. My presentation follows the previous one on 5509 Park Place with similar issues and concerns of granting illegal drainage easement by city engineering staff. This home at 5508 Dever, two hours east, will be torn down, and this home sits many feet above ours. At the time of the of the original land division and development, retaining walls were installed to remove the need for a steep bank between the properties. In addition, previous owners installed elaborate retaining planters and water direction systems, which either held the water or diverted it to the south to Dever Drive. All roof drains at 5508 Dever are buried and tiled. The homeowner plans to cut his rear yard by five feet and has told us all retaining walls, retaining planters, and retaining retaining structures will be removed. At the present time, stormwater from 5508 does not cross into our property except at the farthest southwest corner of 5508, near the telephone pole. Along the entire western property line, we need a durable retaining wall with a French drain immediately to the east to prevent drainage into our yard and direct water south to Dever Drive. We also need gutters with all roof drains on the north and west tiled to Dever Drive. I am also concerned about city engineering drainage memos making statements to benefit builders that are simply not true. In the engineering review of 5508 Dever Drive, which states, "This," quote, "this drainage path is through private property to the west and then to Dever Drive," quote. By making this statement, staff may create a civil issue between the city of Edina and us with this language in the memo. We have been told by council this appears to be an illegal backdoor eminent domain taking of our property rights. This takes our property rights and gives them to the builder. We were not notified, we were not compensated, and if not corrected, an illegal taking of our property rights occurs. We again request the city engineering memos be corrected and sent to all parties. Thank you, and I also want to state the building official has been helpful to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Groats.
Before I begin my remarks, I would like to submit these photographs to the council and mayor.
Sure.
My name is Ken Shavis. My wife and I live at 6509 Ryan Avenue in the Cornelia neighborhood of Edina. Twenty-eight years ago, we built our home where we currently reside. A year ago, the streets in our neighborhood were totally reconstructed, and the whole project was supposedly completed in October 2013. I say supposedly completed because while the city obtained beautifully made streets, I and many of my neighbors in a two-to-three-block area ended up with a much less desirable outcome. Specifically, one area's bordering newly constructed curbs, usually in front of our homes, became atrociously barren-looking weed patches because of improperly reseeding of those of these areas. Last spring, I contacted Joe Clement, Field Tech for S.E.H., the engineering firm hired by the city to coordinate the street project. I told him of obvious problems since grass had failed to grow. He assured me that the contractor, Northwest Asphalt Incorporated, was aware of the issue and would be taking remedial action. I also contacted Chad Milner, Edina Director of Engineering, when it appeared nothing was being done. He informed me that I was one of numerous residents who contacted his office to complain. He personally showed up to tour the neighborhood. By July 31st, with nothing still not happening and feeling extremely upset, I emailed Mr. Milner to tell him that on August 15th, I would contract with Bachmann's to have my curb area redone with sod. He could expect a bill from me once the work was completed. He told me he had no authority to pay the bill. By this time, I was also told that come the cool fall season, the contractor would be conducting slit seeding throughout the neighborhood. I decided to patiently patiently wait. I know from my own experience, printed articles, and specific information from Bachmann's, that August 15th through September 15th is the ideal time to reseed lawns. As of today, not a thing has been done by the contractor. Yesterday, I called Joe Clement. The work was supposed to have been completed by this past Friday, September 12th. The responsible parties never showed up in the area. How about today? Joe did not know anything. In the past few weeks, I acted in my own best interest. I prepared the barren part of my lawn with peat moss, new black dirt, and continued to remove weeds as I had been doing over the whole summer. Yesterday, I reseeded all the renovated curb lawn areas. Chad Milner informed me that Northwest Asphalt has been paid in full for the whole project. In many years of dealing with contractors of all types and stripes, I know that if you pay the bill in full before the work is completed, the chances of it getting done in a quick fashion is practically nil. In fact, many contractors don't even fulfill their obligation.
Mr. Shavis, I'd like you to drift over a little bit on your three minutes. I think we understand the issue, and I'm sorry that I'm going to have to ask you to...
Could I just add one more sentence?
Finish your presentation. All right, go ahead and finish.
Chad, if the city of Edina completely pay an irresponsible company for not fulfilling the terms of legally binding contract, then it should have no difficulty paying me for my time in excess of 25 hours and the cost of materials for the work I have expended. When the first street construction assessment notice I received...
Mr. Shavis, yeah, you're way over.
From the city comes due, I will be subtracting what I believe is just the old me.
Okay, thank you. Let us go to work on this. We're not happy about what we see in your photographs either, so let us go to work on this. Thank you. Anyone else have a concern for the council? Yes, sir.
I'm Steve Marks. I live at 5121 Gorgas. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm speaking about the street program that's coming up, and I am giving my opinion, not only my own, but what I have gotten from people from Indianola and Juanita. And I think the council really needs to look at this whole situation, not only on Gorgas, which is one block long, a cul-de-sac, and the other two streets, because at the meeting at the Public Works Building, I don't think anybody was really listened to. Thank you, and thank you all for serving on the council.
Thank you, Mr. Marks, and we'll look forward to seeing you when we have the public hearing regarding the proposed assessment. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we're going to move on from the community comment portion of the agenda to reports and recommendations. The first item in that portion of the agenda is a proposed resolution setting on a preliminary basis, the 2015 budget and levy, and our city manager, Scott Neal, will introduce the topic, then followed by Mr. Rogman, then back to Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, the action that we're asking the city council to make is to set the maximum property tax levy for the upcoming year. I think that's an important, it's important to keep that in mind as you as you listen through the presentation tonight that Mr. Rogman is going to give you. It's important to remember that that the budget that you're about to see is driven by your goals, your service level, choices, and the work plan. Three very important documents that we use every day to guide our work for you and for our residents. These are really the translation, the budget that we're going to show you tonight is the translation of those work plans, goals, strategic plans, anything that the council has approved. This is where we translate those into dollars and cents. We're going to ask you tonight to approve the maximum tax levy. When you when you set the maximum tax levy, that is the that is the action we need to process tax notices. This gets communicated then to Hennepin County. Tax notices are issued sometime in the second week of November typically. There's a hearing date that you set earlier tonight for for the public to have an official public hearing to comment on the budget on December 2nd. Our last council meeting of the year is December 16th, we hope. We also have to, but we have to, we do have to approve the budget before the end of the calendar year, but that's the that's the the last couple of meetings that we have set up, and then we can start it all over again sometime during the first quarter of 2015. So with that, I'll have some comments to wrap up after Mr. Rogman, but Mr. Rogman, take it away.
You want to comment on the fact that this is preliminary in nature and sets the ceiling versus the floor?
Yes. The what you're, the action we're seeking from council members tonight is to set the preliminary maximum levy. What councils typically do, and what staff typically do after the maximum levy is set, is we continue to refine our budget forecast, we continue to refine our expenditures, and we bring final numbers to you at that hearing in December. So this isn't the, this isn't the end, but it's close, we're, it's not the end of the end, but we're getting closer to the end of that process.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Rogman.
Director Rogman.
Congratulations.
Thank you, mayor and council. Thanks, Scott. I am here tonight to talk about the 2015 operating budget and CIP process in advance of the action before you tonight, which is setting the preliminary levy for 2015. So I have a few topics I want to cover on the budget and CIP. First up is the CIP and budget process review. I also want to talk a little bit about the staff recommended capital improvement plan, or CIP. In addition, I want to talk tonight about the staff recommended preliminary budget and levy that we're asking council to approve, and finally, we'll get to tax capacity and valuation estimates for Edina residents. So first is the 2015 CIP and budget process review. In Edina, we've, for a few years now, done a two-year budget process where every other year, we focus on either the CIP or the operating budget. In 2014, being an even year, we've spent the majority of our time this year working on the CIP for the next five years. We've spent less of our time updating the the operating budget that we set the framework for last year. So here's a timeline of the work we've done so far in 2015. We started the CIP process in April. We're in September now. The highlighted areas are the actions we're taking tonight, and hopefully wrapping up, as Scott outlined, in December with the final adoption on December 16th. So we're maybe about halfway through the process, but we have a lot of work that needs to be done yet. One of the things we've done this year for the CIP is we've asked for public feedback on our on our plan. So to start this public feedback process, in May, we posted a discussion on our public engagement website, SpeakUpEdina, about what people thought about the last CIP the city council adopted in 2013. And we asked a few questions about what people thought about that plan. In addition to the online version of the survey, we also circulated a paper version at a city event that was happening at about the same time. Between the paper survey and the online survey, we received about 32 responses to this effort. And if I can summarize those 32 responses, I would say the feedback was generally fairly positive. Participants who took the survey generally thought the city was moving in the right direction, but a lot of them wanted to see the city do more things, make more improvements and build more new amenities and services. So one of the things I did with that feedback is I took all the texts the city received in those 32, 32 responses, and I put it into an online website called TagCito. And one of the things TagCito does is it takes all that text and it makes the words that are repeated most often larger on the screen, and this is what TagCito brought back to me. And you can see on the on the graphic here that the biggest words there are parks, sidewalks, streets, and a few others. So as I said before, these are the, these are the things people were talking about in that in that feedback effort. People generally like parks, sidewalks, and streets, at least the people who responded do, and they want to see the city make improvements to these things or build more of these things. There will be another chance for residents to voice their opinions this fall. Our plan is, once we release the staff recommended 2015 CIP, we're going to put it on SpeakUpEdina again in October, ask three similar questions about what people think about the direction the the city is headed with this recommended plan. And we also plan to make paper copies of that survey available at City Hall. We're also researching additional locations, but those aren't finalized yet, so I can't make any promises, but we're working on that. In addition, an action council took earlier tonight was to set a public hearing on December 2nd to discuss these issues. This slide shows kind of what the internal staff CIP process looks like. The process starts with division leaders submitting CIP project requests and narratives to their respective department heads. Those department heads then take the first, first crack at prioritizing and ranking the the projects requested in their respective departments. They forward those on to the finance department, where we review them, give a few notes, and then start organizing all the requests for a subcommittee made up of select city staff members. And this subcommittee's job is to review all of the requests across all departments and have a standardized city way of prioritizing all the project requests. And then that goes back for review to the executive leadership team here. The city manager kind of finalizes the staff recommended portion of the CIP, and then we bring it to you, the city council, for final review and eventually approval. We had a couple of new goals in the staff process this year to include more citizen input, input and feedback. I've talked about those efforts. We also, this year, included environmental concerns as narrative on certain projects, so when you start looking at the detail, you will see that discussion throughout the book. So what does it look like when we get to the staff recommended capital improvement plan? The process this year was a busy one. We received 226 project requests versus 207 two years ago, the last time we did this process. When you put that in dollar terms, we received $157 million in requests for the five-year term of the CIP this year versus just over $100,000 two years ago, so about a 50% increase in the dollars requested in two years. So staff's role is to make recommendations about which of these projects we believe should be a city priority and move forward and take the next steps, and the city council's role is to make the final decisions and kind of get, guide the staff through the process. This slide shows why CIP funding is important, because we have a lot of city facilities and infrastructure that needs a lot of maintenance. So with that $150 million in requests that we received for this five-year term, about two-thirds of it, or about $100 million of the requested dollars are to repair, maintain, or replace the city's existing infrastructure, amenities, and services. A smaller portion of this year's requests were for expansion of city facilities or services, or new city facilities or services. And one thing that always comes up when we start talking about the capital improvement plan is the construction fund. So many of the projects that are requested have dedicated funding sources. We know that many of the utility projects that move forward will be paid for with water bill and sewer bill revenue. We know that a lot of trails will be built with pedestrian... We know that a lot of trails will be built with pedestrian and cyclist fund money. But some projects, for instance, a city park might not have an identified source of funding. So all the projects that don't have identified sources get lumped together and kind of compete for construction fund dollars. And this is where the prioritization really is the most difficult for all of us. So when it comes to construction fund dollars, we received 63 project requests for the five-year term totaling about $15 million. We know in the next three years, we have about $2 million that is funding we can count on to do these kinds of projects. One of the difficulties we encounter is other sources of funding beyond the $2 million we can count on are somewhat conditional. We hope to have general fund undesignated reserves in 2014 and 2015 to do some of these projects. We don't know that's going to happen. We also have tentatively scheduled another continuation of a tax levy that is scheduled to expire in 2017 that, that might provide another $600,000 or so per year in additional funding for capital improvement plan projects. So in addition to the $2 million we think we can count on, we have, we have tentatively scheduled projects for an additional $2.6 million in the next three years that are conditional. So what does that look like in a graph format? This graph, the, the line across the top, the blue line, shows the total requests over the next three years of the construction fund-funded projects. And I'm focusing on three years, mostly because with the city's biennial budget process, we know we're going to be redoing this all over again in two more years. So the third year is kind of a placeholder. The, the final two years are even more conditional than, than the third year is. The bars on this graph, the green area of the bars is kind of that known financing that we can count on to schedule projects over the next three years. The 2015 bar, the green area, is the highest, because we already know, we, we measured the 2013 general fund undesignated reserves, and we transferred that over to the construction fund a couple of weeks ago. Council made that action to transfer over $950,000 that we know we can start scheduling projects for. If 2015, or 2014 ends as well as 2013 did, we might have an additional similar amount for our 2016 projects. That's kind of the blue area on the second bar, is we hope to have that money available, but we can't count on it just yet. And in 2017, the blue area is similar. That would be the 2015 reserve identified by the audit. The orange area on the, on the 2017 bar represents the staff recommendation to continue a levy that is scheduled to expire and to use that money towards construction fund projects. The, the white area between the blue line and the bars for each year are the projects that the city probably can't afford to do the next three years. Those are the projects that we need to defer for at least three years and possibly longer if we can't find new funding sources. One of the, so one of the things I was talking about is finding predictable and reliable sources of funding for the CIP. So these two pie graphs try to represent that in a little bit different way. The pie graph on the left is the way we currently fund our CIP, or our construction fund projects. The big, the biggest piece, the red area, is transfers from different sources. The largest piece of that by far is from our general fund, undesignated fund balance from the year before. The smaller section, the blue area, is some old assessments and interest that will be declining over the next few years and probably eventually mostly going away. So those areas, our future goal is on the, on the pie chart on the right. And the red and the blue spaces, colors are continued to the chart on the right. It's possible that in the future, the transfers could be much smaller if we run into a general fund year that isn't as positive as the recent history that we've seen in Edina, and we know that the blue section is going to get smaller. So if we want to keep the pie the same size and be able to schedule the same amount of projects in the future, it's important that we identify new funding sources in the future to have a reliable CIP. And those are the, the green and the purple areas. We don't know what those sources are for sure yet, but staff is going to continue working on identifying those. So a summary of staff recommendations as it relates to the CIP. Residents, city council, and city staff have identified many important projects that we need to work on. We can't afford to do all those projects in the next few years, so it, it is important that we continue finding new funding sources so that we can predict and, and have less risk in our CIP process. The next topic I want to talk about is the staff recommended preliminary budget and levy. So I know this timeline is very difficult to read on this chart. I couldn't fit it all in, but if you could read it, what it would say is that we started our two-year budget process in May of 2013. During 2013, that was the year we really took a close look at the two-year operating budget, and we are near the bottom now of this chart and kind of updating what was preliminary approved last year for any changes that have happened in the past year. One of the ways we started off the process last year in 2013 was to do another citizen engagement effort. We hosted three workshops during June of 2013 that we called Financing the Future. And the goal of these workshop, workshops was to ask people questions and gather the feedback and figure out what city of Edina residents who attended these workshops wanted us to do with the city budget. We also met with the city council on a variety of occasions, including a retreat, and talked about what the city council's work plan themes would be for staff in the next two years. The themes that we ultimately arrived at for the work plan for 2014, 2015 were infrastructure, commercial and mixed-use development, workforce, community vision, communications and engagement, and aviation noise. Some of the goals contained within these work plan themes have budgetary impacts. Not all of them, but I'll talk on the next few slides about some of the budget impacts of those work plan goals. One of the infrastructure goals was to convert a half million dollars in unreserved general fund balance to the operating budget by tightening revenue and expenditure estimates and increasing the construction fund line, I'm, over the two-year period. Staff is proposing to do this step in 2015. We'll talk about that in a little bit more detail later. We're also to complete the parks master plan. Another of our infrastructure goals was to finalize the southeast Edina sanitary sewer capacity study and include some projects based on that study in the five-year capital improvement plan. We've done that. We're not entirely certain that we can afford all those projects that were identified, but we have identified them. And also, under infrastructure goals, was to complete construction of what we, a year ago, we're calling the Sports Dome. Today, we're calling it Braemar Field by the end of 2014. I believe we're on track to have that open. We also had workforce goals as a theme. Under workforce goals, one was to restructure the employee benefit program. We've done that. Council also wanted the staff to allocate $150,000 in operating budget each benefit year towards our benefit plan. The city has a cafeteria-style benefit plan where the city contributes a fixed amount for each employee's benefits. The amount might be different depending on whether that employee selects a family plan or a single plan, but it's a fixed amount that the city's contribution. The employee then selects from a menu of options what benefits they want to purchase. We know one, so the employees might buy health insurance, dental insurance, long-term disability, short-term disability, and a variety of other benefits with that contribution. We know that health alone is going to increase 10.5% in 2015 due to an existing contract. It increased about 13% last year. So the, the budget addition that we're proposing to add to that would be about a 6% increase in the city's portion of that cost. Because of the health insurance increase alone, in addition to other increases, we know that the employees are going to see some of that increase too. So it's really a shared burden here between the city and its employees. Also, we have some mandated pension increases for police and fire from PERA. That's the pension program we're all in. Similar to the health insurance, there's an employer contribution and there's employee contribution. So it's also a shared burden that impacts our budget in 2015. Some other work plan themes and goals that we set for the two-year budget process were prioritizing needs for mobile apps. We have Edina to go in operation now. We also have community vision goals to approve a community vision, and the vision Edina process is underway. And we also have several commercial and mixed-use redevelopment goals that backed our budget. So those are the work plan goals that we set out last year at this time for the two-year term of the budget. We have some changes to those that have happened in the past year that we can do within the 4% levy increase that we projected a year ago, and then we have some that we, that will require an existing levy. And that's, that's the two groups I'm showing here. We have a few new funds. We have, we will have changes to the golf course operations budget. The goal is to make those positive changes to the budget so they won't have an impact on the levy. Also, any changes we make to the 2015 to 2019 CIP will impact the equipment line item and capital line item spending in our budget. Won't have any effect on the levy, at least in 2015. We also have a building permit workload increase that comes with increased revenues and also an increase in workload expenses. So that's highlighted because I'm going to come back to that one. And then we have a change to the 2014, 2015 budget that we couldn't put a number on last year when we set the, when we set the two-year work plan and budget, because we were still working on the, what we were calling at the time Sports Dome, what we're now calling Braemar Field. We hadn't finalized the details yet. At the time, we were thinking that would be an, an additional 5% to 7% increase on top of the operating budget increase. We now know that, that that's going to add another 4.4% to the staff recommended increase for 2015. Getting back to the changes in the building and permit area that I've talked about a couple of times. This chart shows a history of our licenses and permits category here in Edina. That includes a variety of licenses and permits, including dog licenses, liquor license. But the big driver here, the big dollar amount, is really building permits. That's what we're talking about. That's why this graph changes. So the green bars here are, are licenses and permit history throughout the past 10 years or so. And you can see, like in a lot of other cities, our building permits decreased from 2006 to 2009, when the recession and the, and the housing meltdown kind of happened. The line on this graph that kind of cuts through the top section there is our budget for licenses, licenses and permits in the general fund. And you can see, as the bars dropped through 2006 to 2009, we had a budgetary response to that in 2010. We dropped our estimates for revenues from building permits for, for over $500,000 that year. So in order to meet that drop in revenue with a similar adjustment on the expenditure side, because we wanted to have a balanced budget, we decided to drop funding for the equipment replacement program, and we made that adjustment by about $500,000, with the understanding that when the building permit revenue returned, we could talk about restoring that funding for the equipment replacement program, which provides the vehicles and equipment we need to provide services. So now that the building permit revenue has returned in 2013, it also looked strong in 2014, and we hope that trend continues. Staff is proposing we restore the funding to the equipment replacement program as well. This graph shows kind of the history of our operating levies. In 2015, we're proposing a 4% increase to our operating levy. And the goal here, in contrast to what we saw on the previous slide, the market forces tend to go wildly up and down. This is the part we can control. The goal here is to have a consistent, stable operating levy increase each year to provide our basic services. In addition to that, we have debt levy, debt levy issues throughout the year. So this is about a 10-year history of how we have done our debt levies. And the big increase in 2015 shown on this chart is from the addition of the Braemar Field debt levy. The year one of that debt levy will start in 2015. It's slightly over a million dollars debt levy. This has a precedent. When you look back just in the last few years, in 2009 and 2010, we did a stepped increase debt levy for the Public Works facility. That was about a $22 million project, and the annual levy for that at this point in 2015 is about $1.5 million. So that was even a larger increase than the $1.1 million or so we're adding for Braemar Field in 2015. So this brings us to, what does that mean for our tax capacity and our valuation estimates, at least based on today's estimates? So the good news here is that market values are going up in Edina and new construction is strong. This is about another 10-year history of market value changes in the city of Edina. The years shown here are assessment years. So the way property taxes work in Minnesota is that you're assessed in one year, and then you pay taxes on that assessment in the following year. So the 2014 market value increase shown here is about 8.6%, and that's going to be what people are paying taxes on in 2015. The green section at the top, it's about 1.3% of that increase comes from new construction during the year that was added. So in Minnesota, we have a tax capacity system where those market values are put through a formula to develop a tax capacity. And think about this as the tax base in Edina is the best way to think about this one. The good news that, is that in addition to those market value increases that we saw on the previous graph, we also have a decertification of our Centennial Lakes TIF district that's affecting our tax capacity in 2015. So the, the increase in our tax capacity or tax base is actually 14% in 2015, a significant increase from the 8.6% market value-based increase on the previous slide. So what does that mean for a single-family residential home? The estimated median market value was $400,000 for taxes payable in 2014. That increase is close to 10% in 2015. The estimated city portion of taxes on this property would increase from $1,141 to $1,218. That's a $77 increase, or a little bit, 6.75% would be a little bit less than the increase of the market value. If the same property actually was valued at $400,000 for 2014 and for 2015, the city portion of the taxes on that property would actually decrease about 3% or $30. On the commercial side, it's a similar increase because values between commercial and residential are increasing at roughly the same rate in the past year. Median value increased 8%. City portion of taxes would increase 5% on your median commercial property. So one of the things I always get asked when it gets to this point is, how does the city of Edina compare to other cities? It's a difficult question to answer because there's no accepted methodology for how to compare one city to another, either on the tax side or on the service side. But it's a question that gets asked often, so we do, we look at it a number of ways that might be reasonable to view it on, and this is the first way. This is tax per capita. I got this data from the Minnesota State Auditor website last week. As of last week, 2012 was the most recent data available. But this basically takes all of our tax levies, all of our tax capacity tax levies, adds them together, and then divides them by the population of our city. So on this basis, out of 11 kind of neighboring cities, Edina is number seven, $529 in taxes per capita. That puts us roughly in the middle. Another way to look at governmental revenue is not just taxes, but what, where does all of our governmental revenue come from? In some cities, they do more special assessments than others. In some cities, they get more intergovernmental grants or local government aid than other cities do. And so this kind of takes away the, the description of what that revenue is and says, where does all your revenue come from for your governmental purposes? And in the same 11 cities, from the same website, Edina gets $969 per capita, and on this basis, we're still kind of in the middle of this group of comparison cities, but a little bit towards the lower end than we were on the previous comparison. The League of Minnesota Cities has a property tax calculator on their website, and what this one does is it takes kind of a property buyer approach and says, if you're looking for a $400,000 house, and you're looking in the, in the west metro group of these 11 cities, you might buy a house in any of these cities, and, and if you pay $400,000 in any of these cities, these are the taxes you'll pay to those cities. This, this property tax calculator is kind of a nice tool. You can put in any, any home value, any city in the state, and any year, and it will give you a city tax value. So on this basis of our 11 comparison cities, Edina, the, the person who purchases a home in Edina would pay the lowest taxes, at least in 2014. This is, this data comes from the same League of Minnesota Cities property tax calculator. It just compares to a different group of cities. These 16 cities are not so geographically close to Edina in some cases, but they do resemble Edina in many cases in terms of population and activities that they do. So we're also the, the lowest tax, using the property buyer approach for the So we're also the, the lowest tax, using the property buyer approach for this group of cities. So that concludes my presentation for this evening. More data avail, is available on these topics on the city's website. Navigate to the finance page. It, it has a lot of more information about CIP budgets and other things we talked about tonight. And also call me by phone. And I think Scott wanted to say a few closing comments before we take questions.
Thank you.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Ragman.
Senator Neal.
Your honor, I think to, to put us, just a quick summary on, on the presentation that you saw tonight. Our proposal to you spends, is proposing to spend $2.2 million more in 2015 than we spent in 2014. Half of that, a little, actually a little over half of it, actually, 54% of that is, is the new debt service associated with Braemar Field. And you effectively made the decision to go forward with that part of this levy back in October of 2013, when we awarded the, the contractor, made the decision to go forward. We have awarded the contracts. We've sold the bonds. So that, that is a decision that we are locked into. And then, like I said, it's about 1.2 million of new spending next year, and that's about half of what we're proposing. About a third of what we're proposing is new cap, capital expenditure funding. And you saw that in, in, in the form of the equipment levy. That's about a 600, just $660,000 increase. The smallest piece of what we're proposing to you tonight, about 20% of, of the increase for next year, is a $400,000 increase in our operating levy. And that's, that's about a 1.8, 1.9% increase, which is pretty close, just a smidge over where we see inflation at right now, which is about 1.8%. So from an operating standpoint, we feel like that's a, that's a fairly judicious proposal that we're making to you. And we think the, the capital expenditure piece of this is, is well justified in terms of what it means to the community. And of course, the, the debt service increase in the new Braemar Field and the outdoor rink is something I think we'll, we'll all be proud of when it's, when it's completed. When we look at where we are from a tax standpoint, even if we do take the action tonight, we do know that, that from the property buyer approach, we'll still be at the lowest compared to all of our neighbors and all of the MLC cities. So even, even with the increase that we're proposing, we're still in that enviable position vis-à-vis our, our competitor cities. We think this is a good proposal. We'd, we'd ask for your support for it tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I think there will be council members with questions that I think would relate to you when you come back, assuming you get preliminary approval tonight, that, that you can help us answer these inquiries so that we can set the budget on a final basis at our meeting in December. So I think Member Sprague wanted to go first.
When, when is the, there are other debt issues that are coming off the books in the next few years. What, what's the schedule? Where we're going to have a little more capacity in our debt service levy to avoid the type of increases we're looking at?
So then, the next debt service levy to expire will be, the last year of the levy will be in 2016. So we'll have a decision to make in 2017 about whether to continue that levy to pay for capital improvement plan spending or to let the levy expire. After that, it's going to be a few years. We're currently in year 14 of our city hall debt. That'll be the, I believe, the next one to expire after that. And that's a 20-year levy. So we've got approximately six or seven years to go on the city hall.
So that's about 2020. In 2016, the park referendum expires?
Correct.
Is that, so is it that year that we gain?
2016 is the last year of the debt service levy.
2017.
2017 would be the year we have a decision to make.
And then 2021 for city hall, roughly.
Yeah.
For the Centennial Lakes TIF that expires is decertified in 2015. Does that mean that additional tax capacity comes in in 2016?
For taxes payable in 2015. So this is the year the tax base increase is greater than our market value increase. Right.
The, the biggest place where you're going to see the impact of that is in our HRA fund. Because if you look at our HRA fund, I think coming up next year, we've got about 100, I think $100,000 in revenues compared to, what, what do we have revenues in there this year?
I think it was around three.
Yeah. So that's where you see the, the big impact of the decertification of that TIF district. It has a big impact on our HRA.
So the additional tax capacity, though, on, on the other side of the ledger in the general fund, is that a potential source of funding for the CIP going forward?
It's what we're using as part of the CIP discussion this year.
All right. Just want to make sure that's out there for the public. And then the, we have an eight, roughly 8% proposed levy ceiling. How is that absorbed by the increase in tax capacity in general? In other words, how, the, the pie piece is getting bigger, but the pie is getting bigger as well with, with growth. Can you talk me through that a little bit?
Councilmember Sprague, I'm going to, I'm going to dance while Mr. Wilson comes up to the microphone, because I think he can give you the, the best view of that. But I would tell you, one of the things that you see happening here, as Mr. Ragman pointed out, is a, a 14% increase in our tax capacity, an 8.4% increase in our levy. But that 8.4% increase in our levy feels like a six, and a 6.75% increase for the median, single-family taxpayer. So that's, without that increase in our tax capacity, the feel of that would be much greater.
But is that, is that impact from their property value going up versus the pie?
You'll, you'll see it's, if we could do differential equations in front of you tonight, we could tell you what part of their increase is attributable to both the increase, the overall increase in their value, and the, the spending changes that we're making. That's a number that we could, we could come up with. I just can't come up with it in front of you.
Do you know what the rough, I mean, because what we get asked is, I mean, some people get confused because their tax value goes up and we say, you know, our levy was pretty static, a couple of points.
Yep.
So it's based on your tax value going up, not necessarily the levy going up. And in this case, we're raising the levy potentially 8%, but tax values are going up as well. So how do we answer that same question to a constituent?
You are, one of the, one of the slides that, that Mr. Ragman showed you, Director Ragman showed you was that, was that if you looked at the median, single-family home from, from this year to next year, that increase is 6.75% that they will feel if you ultimately approve this budget as proposed. If you drew that line from $400,000 house to $400,000 house, they would feel a 3% decrease in their tax burden. So, so there is a way that we could attribute it, what part of the increase you're feeling is just the general level going up and what part of it is related to spending. Just can't do it for you tonight. Unless, unless Mr. Wilson can do it on, in front of us.
No, I think you did a good job.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
No, but we could talk about what is potentially coming online with the taxes for Southdale One. I think I saw a sheet that you showed me the other night for that.
We, we will, Councilmember Swenson, members of council, we will continue to see in, in our tax base increases every year because of the new tax base development that's coming on. Mr. Wilson and Director Teague actually have, have done some forecasting in that regard. And we're, we're drafting up a report that we're going to make to you to show you what the impact of that is. When you take a, when you take the corner of a, of a mall parking lot, like, like, like the city did a few years ago, and, and Stu Nolan did a few years ago, that corner of that parking lot was paying, you know, 10 or $20,000 a year in, in total property taxes. When it's fully developed, it's going to be on the tax rolls at 50-some million dollars and paying, paying to the city alone, almost $200,000 a year. When you start multiplying that by the Lennar project and by the buyer lease project and the Yorktown Continental project and the 60, the 65th and France project, you really begin to see a, a material change in our tax base. And we're beginning to, you're beginning to feel that now on just what redevelopment has occurred in the last three or four years. But the forecast is pretty positive when you start multiplying those.
So it's not something that affects us for next year, but it will potentially be a positive for us two years from now.
Oh, absolutely.
So we're in that in-between space where we have growing, you know, infrastructure needs, but the funding sources aren't quite online to give us the additional capacity is what I'm hearing.
I think that's very.
Member Swenson, other questions at this point in time? Member Brindle, questions?
You know, numbers never have been my strong suit. So we had a little bit of a discussion earlier today, Eric and I did on the telephone, talking about comparable projects when we have had significant levy increases in the past. And that, I think, helped me to have some perspective of when I, when I look at a number larger than the typical levy increase we've had in the past, which is two or three. We have had larger levy increases in the past. They're easy to forget, but we have. The Public Works project, for example, was close to 20 million, was it? And that's comparable to the Braemar Field project, which also includes improvements to Pamela Park. So looking back at, I think, I think the levy increase from the Public Works project probably came in, in my first or second year as a council member, which is six years ago. And looking back at that time, our levy increase that year was seven, maybe?
So the way we did the public works facilities, we stepped it up over two years.
That's right.
And in 2009, it was about a $600,000 increase to the debt service levy. And then the next year in 2010, it was another 500,000 plus on top of that. So in those two years, the, the tax capacity levy increases were 7% and 5.7%.
In those two consecutive years?
So in those two consecutive years is the way we did it at that time.
So what we are looking at here, and this helped me a great deal, and whether I explain it correctly or not, you can kind of help me out. But we are looking at a one-year bump where we would have a levy increase of some significant size. Understandably, we have a larger tax base to share that increase or to spread that increase over. So it is, it's not 8.4% in a 2009 economy. It's 8.4% in a 2015 economy, which is different. And so that, that, does that, does that explain it well?
I thought that was a good explanation.
Oh, okay.
I think the other thing I remember talking on the phone with you about today, Councilmember Brindle, was that after this one-year bump in the tax levy increase, the city has this nice new amenity for people to enjoy.
Right. And that, and that's huge, the hundreds and hundreds of letters we got in support of it and asking us for it over several years. And so after this one-year bump, it's my understanding that we can potentially expect to go back to the 2% levy increase or a very modest levy increase, that we wouldn't necessarily be looking at another large increase. Is that fair to say?
So the Sports Dome Braemar Field levy is a 20-year levy. This is the first year where you really feel that increase. After, after 2015, the levy will run for another 19 years without any significant fluctuations up or down.
So we have a repeat of that number.
Right.
For the next 19 years.
Right. And then talking about 2016 or, or future increases will be based on future spending decisions and future work plan decisions in those years.
All right. And looking at the increase in the construction fund, is that a single-year increase or is that something that we'll see again next year as well?
So the equipment, the equipment replacement program allocation that we're doing is, is also, I believe, a one-year kind of thing.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. They hit us both at the same time, I guess, the first year of the Braemar Field as well as the construction fund. But both of those are coming because we're a healthy community. And the construction fund and re-establishing the funding of the equipment replacement fund is, is important because our fleet has to be in good shape. So, all right. Well, those are my questions. I appreciate everything.
Member Bennett, questions?
No questions. I've never, I've been on, this will be end of my eighth year on the council, I've never voted against a budget, and I'll be voting against this one. If we're divided in two parts, I would support the approximately 4% increase in the general fund levy. I think it's overdue. I was, I've been here for those years when we made those tough decisions. I also was on the council when we approved the Public Works building, and I do make a difference. I, I think most people make a difference between core public services like Public Works and like a fire department and something that, a sports dome that's going to be used by some enthusiastic people, but it's not the majority of people in the community and it's not generally open to the public. I think there'll be a walking track function, but anyway. And I think that should have gone to a referendum. I think it would have passed. The 2013 survey showed about an even split between people who supported it and people who didn't support it. But the people who supported it, who did number in the hundreds, could definitely have made their case for it. And then people would have been voluntarily taking on that additional 4% in levy increase rather than having it imposed by this body. So I, and I also, it shadows some other conversations we've had because we have some difference of opinion on this body about whether or not the community can afford a community center with classrooms, possibly an art center rolled in, possibly recreation center or not, because we don't want to spend that money. And I think something like that for general use would be worth the money. Probably, probably worth a referendum as well, worth a referendum. But it is something that could be justified from the capacity for general use in the community. So I'm, I, I do support Manager Neal's statement earlier that this, this is something that was, does reflect choices and priorities that this council has made and set over the past year. It's not, it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. It's been coming for the last year. And again, I would support half of it, but I will not support the half that I think should have gone to a referendum.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Couple of questions and things that you could probably check on between tonight's vote and December. So I commend you for what Manager Neal characterized as the inflationary increase, $400,000 increase in the operating levy, the 1.89% on the general operating levy on just about $23 million was, worked very well done internally to try to suppress those costs and, and make sure that we're operating as effectively as we can. Of course, what we're seeing here for the bulk of our, our budget are, are things that folks in our community have said that, that they wanted over time and that we've needed to do frankly, to make sure that our city stays, stays vital. There's the city hall debt service. There's the gymnasium debt service. And we're now halfway through paying for all those gymnasiums that folks wanted. Again, not everybody uses those gymnasiums, but they are important to people in our community. Fire station debt service, we needed to build a new fire station. We're in year eight there. Public Works facility is, was critical. And now we're going to try to be figuring out what to do with the old site. We're in year seven there. The Sports Dome, of course, had overwhelming support in our community, and that's why we supported it as well. And that's, that's a substantial portion of the new debt that, that we have here. And then, of course, you, as you mentioned, the park bond, market value levy is a little over $600,000 a year that we pay on that, on that bond debt. And that'll be going off after two years from now. So in 2017, we'll have an extra $600,000 to work with. So the, to me, the, the bulk of the increase, the vast bulk of the increase here is coming as a result of things that we either needed to do to improve the infrastructure of our community or we were doing in response to community demand for, for these, these services, such as the Sports Dome and the outdoor ice rink. Those are going to be great things for our community. What I would like to have you look at is the construction fund proposal and the equipment levy to. levy to increase that basically from a million to a million six. If memory serves me right, we got a budget of about 29 million here, so that should mean the levy about 29.7 total. 200, so that would mean about, roughly about $300,000 would represent 1% of the budget. So, if we look at how to align that equipment levy more with what we did last year and the year before, right at about a million dollars and not be at a million six, what will be the consequences of that to the overall proposed budget increase? I think I made myself clear there, didn't I? Yep, so.
Yeah, I think I understand.
And I think I know what the answer is, but I think it's going to be important for us to, to think about that. So, that was the one question that I had, and I think Member Swenson wanted to make a motion.
I'll move Resolution 2014-100.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2014-100, setting on a preliminary basis the 2015 budget and levy. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, may I clarify who made this second?
Member Brindle. And, this just is a favorable majority vote, voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Carried. Next matter is Resolution 2014-95, accepting various grants and donations through a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve that resolution. When we get a gift, we have to prove it through a motion of the council. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. We got a gift to the Edina Administration Department, Snuffy's Malt Shop, breakfast for 100 people, that was very generous. Breakfast at Snuffy's Malt Shop. It's an interesting concept.
It's part of the Grand View, the Wooddale and Valley View.
Oh, the, the small area plan?
The small area plan, and they're going to meet in that area, and then they're going to walk the area.
Okay, great. And then the Edina Parks Department got a very, very generous gift from the Edina Baseball Association, and that was the Braemar Field one dugout fence renovation, $6,200. And then the Edina Police Department got a grant from the Crime Prevention Fund for night, to unite expenses. So, those will all be posted on the website. And now we will move on to.
Confirmation.
Yep. I think I'm going to save that for the mayor and council comments portion of the agenda. Let's go to C, which is 8C, selection of the Grand View Development Partner, and Mr. Noonendorf, you have this matter.
Thank you, and good evening. This agenda item is regarding the selection of a potential development partner for the former Public Works site in Grand View. In August, the city received responses from 10 different development teams regarding this property. These responses came after the city issued a request for interest back in June. That request for interest was distributed extensively to professionals in the urban planning and real estate development fields. That, the RFI packet was sent to more than 60 local professionals. Ads are placed on the internet and through local and national trade journals to really drum up interest in this, in this site. The information was also posted to several local websites, ULI, the Planning Association, the Association of Realtors, et cetera. And this RFI document was a long time in the making. The, the, the Grand View CAT team spent over a year discussing what that document could look like, should look like, and the final document that was finished by staff was really based in this conversation that started a few years ago, and then were advanced by the, by the last CAT. So, with the 10 responses that came in, a small subcommittee of staff members narrowed the field to four, and that was not an easy decision. There were a lot of really high caliber proposals here. But on September 2nd, four teams came to the city council, and over a very long work session, presented their background, their qualifications, and some of their initial ideas. We heard from Doran Companies, Fraunchu Commercial Real Estate Group, Greco, and Kraus Anderson Realty. Earlier this evening in work session, the city council had an opportunity to discuss what they heard, what they liked, what they didn't like, and possibly to identify a preferred developer, to see if we can start moving down the road and advancing and implementing some of those visions in that Grand View development framework. So, there is a possible motion that was presented and distributed to you this evening, based on the discussion at the work session. And should the, should the council decide to advance and identify a partner tonight, or a potential partner, that's just the first step in a long process. We're still about a year away from actually making firm decisions on the site, so there are several steps along the way. But naming a potential partner is the first step to continue this ball, moving forward towards achieving that vision that's been discussed for so long. With that in mind, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Noonendorf? We had an hour-long conversation upstairs, and of course, saw all these terrific presentations. Member Swenson, have you got a?
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right.
My motion is to name Fraunchu Commercial Real Estate Group and their team, including Opus, DJ Architects, Reynolds Urban Design, and Confluence, as the potential development partner to work in collaboration with the city to redevelop the former Public Works site at 5146 Eden Avenue in the Grand View District, and to authorize the staff to negotiate the terms of this partnership for final city council review and approval.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
And discussion. Member Bennett?
Thank you. A couple of things that I think should be important to consideration is that we received from the Met Council on May 9th, 2014, our, 2013 annual population estimates, they reflect housing stock in the community changes since 2010, and our housing stock is divided among the four, these four types of housing. 12,842 single-family detached homes, 56% of the total. Townhomes, 1,326, or 6% of the total. Duplex, three and four unit dwellings are 515 in number as of April 1, 2013. Again, this is current as of May 2014, that's 2%. And multifamily units in the city of Edina increased from 2010 to 2013, now numbering over 8,853, or 35% of all of the housing units in the city. The second piece of information I'd like to put forward for consideration is that a neighboring community is considering the creation of a community center, and it is looking at the following criteria: that a site be convenient and easy to get to, that it be central to the population, that it be adjacent to civic gathering spaces, that it be safe, safe to walk or bike to, that it has aesthetics and landscape, that it has existing public land, or rather, is built on existing public land, that it connects to other destinations, that it is close to transit, that it's on a site that is for redevelopment or blighted, that there are adjacent or shared parking opportunities nearby, and that partnerships are possible. Thanks.
All right. Member Sprague?
Thank you. We, we have some disagreements on the council about what the best process was to reach here, but now that we're here, I found that this applicant had the best team, and they had the most complete responses to their perspective on the, the vision in the Grand View framework that's presented in the principles. There was another applicant, Ryan, that responded with this, I want to read this. "In this case, we have seen some of the visioning work done by the Cunningham Group over the years, and think it does a great job indicating the unique mix of community, residential, and commercial space a broader area could support. Without a clear pathway to future phases, however, we believe Phase One would likely redevelop as traditional medical and/or residential space over structured parking with little community or catalyst space. And we're concerned that without such catalyst space, Phase One would become relatively isolated and fail to advance the overall goal of redeveloping the broader area." That is what we don't want to happen. And although, again, although we disagree on the ways to get there, I, I believe that we all have that shared vision of a catalytic public space, something that's going to be to activate the area and be a centerpiece in the region, which is something that Fraunchu said in their response. And, the other, the other part of, of the Fraunchu application, I believe, that will be necessary for going to do a catalytic public amenity, is to have someone who has creative financing options, whether it's TIF, philanthropic, or otherwise, and I think they bring those resources to the table for us.
Member Brindle, any comment?
I think the, a couple of pieces of this that, that there were two developers that were on the top for me, and one was Fraunchu and one was Kraus Anderson. And the, both have a lot of experience here in our city, both have done terrific work in our city. All four presentations were extremely professional, well-done, much appreciated. I think we learned a lot from every one of the presenters that was there. And I, I think that it is incumbent on us as a council and a staff to drive this and not be driven. I mentioned this upstairs, one of the presenters mentioned something that really, for me, as I, as I mentioned upstairs, is the lens through which we should be watching this and driving this development, and that is, no more powerful design generator than, there is no more powerful design generator than public space or a public feature. So, if we stay focused on that, then our priority of developing this as a public site will, 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 we'll be able to stay focused on that. Not that there wouldn't be the possibility of some private development that would support this public site, absolutely, if that's residential, if that's commercial, but if it is, to, to really respect the, the CAT 1, the CAT 2, all of the work that it went into, the seven guiding principles, I think that statement really pulls it all together. So, I'd like to have us really make sure that through this whole process, we don't lose sight of our goals, and, and, and really come through in a true partnership to something that is going to be a great success.
Good, thanks, Member Brindle, any, thank you, for the Members Swenson? Okay, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Carried. So, this could be an extraordinary journey on this public-private partnership enterprise, and we look forward, I think, as a council and as a community to, as you say, Mr. Noonendorf, the next year, as we, as we get the facts, and explore, and discover together, and, and determine a pathway for that particular piece of public property, and there may, of course, be other things that happen along the way. But here we go. It'll be three years of work so far, and we're going to continue to the next step. Thank you. All right, next matter is the potential approval of the development contract with City Homes Development LLC for the Acre Dubois development up in the Morningside neighborhood.
Mayor, members of the council, yeah, we're going to discuss the Acres Dubois development, preliminary of the development contract. So, please recall, on February 18th, 2014, the council approved the final plat, development contract and preservation easement for the Acres Dubois development, but that was with MK Holdings. Since that time, MK Holdings has sold the development to City Homes Development LLC. Those representatives are in the audience tonight, if there's any questions for those folks. So, this action will transfer that development contract to City Homes. As an update, the final plat has been filed with Hennepin County, park dedication fees have been paid to the city, and City Homes is currently finalizing construction plans to gather permits from the city, the Minnehaw Creek watershed districts, and other regulatory agencies. Soon as all those requirements and submittals are approved by those agencies, they can begin construction. So, we're recommending that council approve the development contract with City Homes Development LLC, and I'd like to run through just a few, other than the name change, there's a few other changes I'd like to make you aware of. So, on page four of the development contract, statute 505.02 has been repealed, and it's now 505.01, or 021, and there has been an updated contract put on the dais tonight for your reference. Another change.
So, 505.02 became 505.021?
Yep, correct.
All right.
Page nine, there's been some, item E, page nine, item E, there's been discussions on the original contract, there was, it was approved as a four-foot sidewalk. Discussions with the developer has led to a possibility of a four- or five-foot sidewalk located within the right-of-way or within a sidewalk easement on those properties on the west side of the development. So, we just wanted to clarify that with discussions we've had. So, it would still have a sidewalk, it may be a five-foot. Going from a four-foot to a five-foot sidewalk, as we see those final plans, we'll work through that. And on page.
Hold on a second. Member Bennett?
Yes, Director Milner, I know that we have not had the living streets policy implementation for, forward for vote yet, but I do believe that they are going to a five-foot standard for a sidewalk, for sidewalk width.
That's what we recommend, if we ever have to take them over for maintenance purposes, we have the equipment that fits on five-foot sidewalks. We do have four-foot sidewalks in town, and they're potentially keep being some context-sensitive where we'd want to continue with four-foot, but five-foot is our recommended width.
And I know that within the Morningside area itself, just within blocks, there was a side street on which the narrower sidewalk was continued, but the new sidewalk on West 42nd, I believe, is five feet.
Correct.
And St. Louis Park on West 39th Street is just finishing construction of a six-foot wide sidewalk.
That I know for sure, but I know they're doing a lot of sidewalk improvements.
Yeah, I do know for sure, because somebody's actually measured it and reported it to me. And it allows for much more comfortable walking, two people abreast, and then when you have that third person coming in another direction. But, if we don't change that to reflect the five-foot measurement, at least we should clean up the grammar in that first line of E.
Yeah, get, strike the word of.
Yeah.
All right, we got another question for you on, on that issue. We've given you the authority in the development agreement to determine the location of the sidewalk. I'm also wondering if we want to give you the authority to approve the width?
Yeah, this is a dead-end cul-de-sac, a four-foot would function in this area.
Well, well, my point is that if you decide you want a five-foot in there.
Sure.
We, we would give you the authority to do that in this development agreement. So, it would read, "The developer shall construct a four- or five-foot wide sidewalk, either with the right-of-way on the west side of the public street or such other location, and in such width as approved by the city engineer."
Or mayor, both location and width to be approved by the city engineer.
Why, why do we have to give an option? Why can't we just go to five feet?
I would prefer that. It's a new sidewalk, it's not joining in with an old sidewalk.
The only thing I'm concerned about is there may be some, some issues that pop up from a, an engineering standpoint, where it's too, it's too tight a fit. So, I'd like to give you that flexibility to decide whether it should be a four-foot or a five-foot wide sidewalk.
Yeah, I can take the input, that we're going to try for a five-foot sidewalk unless there's some construction limit situation that we want a four-foot.
So, that, that would be our default, right? The five-foot width?
Right. Okay, what's the next change?
Page 11, item H. So, at the time of the, of the previous contract, it ran with lots 1 through 8. They've only purchased lots 1 through 7, lot 8 is still held by the Sedell family, so.
So, one at the five, and the hill on the other street?
Correct. So, those were the, the changes, other than name changes throughout the document.
There was another significant change, under 21.
Correct. On page 10, 21L, we beefed up the turf warranty requirements and made it match our. On page 10, 21L, we beefed up the turf warranty requirements and made it match our mid-dot standard specifications and also warranty for 12 months on any planting that's done in that area on city, you know, for the Lynn and Littles site for the city, open space number six.
There was another change as well regarding the grading of, I think, lot seven, looking for that. It's under special provision, section 21, and let's see, L. No, that's the one on turf.
No, it's, we just talked...
Okay, it's missing. It's actually, it's a deletion of material that was there in the developer agreement that we approved on February 18th, 2014. The original, okay, the original read, "Developer must obtain a license agreement from the city for use of lot eight, block three," Crocker and Crowell's first edition. "Per the approved grading plan, city property which agreement will include a fee for use of the city property, a restoration plan is required with a license agreement."
So lot eight, they're not buying?
Understood, but looking back, okay, so also, looking back at the conditions that were also placed on approval, there was also a reference...
So you're talking about that?
Oh, this is condition, so this is page five of the minutes, which is attached to this staff report. It's the last page of the minutes. Condition L, use of lot seven, so we're referring to lot seven, for the overall grading of the development will require compensation to the city of Edina. A restoration plan shall be submitted by the applicant, subject to review and approval by the city council.
Correct, we referenced the minutes.
Right, the conditions, so the conditions in the original approval, and there was a reference to that in the original development agreement. And my question is, why is that language deleted from, because it's not referring to lot eight in the conditions that were placed? I think the contemplation is, as has happened with other projects, for instance, one near Pamela Park, I think on Brookview, also on Lynn, there has been some disturbance of public land in changing the grade of adjacent property. And I think, beginning with Lynn and Littles, the city has made agreements with the developers, and there has been some kind of compensation that has been paid to the city. So that condition, you know, didn't raise, I think, an eyebrow. I don't recall any special discussion or comment of it when we approved this in February 2014. And my question again is, why is it deleted?
Maybe Attorney Knutson can speak to that, because he did the changes, I guess...
That was taken out, that's 21L now.
It's now 21L?
Well, it was 21L before. It just was a different, it was a different 21L.
Yes, that's the replacement provision.
Well, why is there no mention? The previous contained mention of compensation, which is in the conditions that the council agreed to in approving the final plat? And why is it deleted from this developer's agreement when it was in the previous approved developer's agreement?
I can, now I understand your question. Where the fee, so we've had this discussion as the applicant came in and said, what is the fee for use of private property? We've never charged the fee for use of private property. We require them to restore it back or better than what it should...
Sure, and then the contemplation is that they won't be using the adjacent public land for the grading of lot seven, correct? Because that would be where the fee would come in, is just within, like on the Brook, is it Brookview? Brookview, over by Pamela Park. And also with Lynn and Littles, where it was sort of after the fact, there was restoration of public land that was used during construction on adjacent property.
But it wasn't a fee, it was a duration.
Yes, but for Brookview, where it was done in advance and henceforth. I mean, Manager Neil has told us we've created a policy on this. And so we actually, as a body, have approved on our agenda an item for Brookview where there was construction of a new home, and the developer was going to be using the public land for purposes during the construction of the new home.
Right.
Yeah, so that's my question. The question is, if the grading of lot seven is not going to involve the public land at all, then deleting that compensation does make sense. But if it's going to impact the public land, then I think it should remain consistent with the language that was in the condition approved on February 18th, 2014, in both the conditions of the final plat and in the original developer's agreement.
So they will need to grade just a small portion on the west side to install the sanitary sewer pipe and water main pipes?
Also access, site access. I think that was the issue over at Brookview.
If site access over lot eight, correct?
Well, I don't think they'd be gaining the access over lot eight, because that's Frank Sidell's property.
I mean, they have access off Morningside Road.
So, but if we're asking them to replace the turf and warranty it for 12 months, what's the fee that you intend to charge?
First of all, I'm looking at the language that we all approved.
I understand that.
Without any contention.
No, I'm okay, I'm okay with this.
Why isn't it not in there? Why isn't this language in there?
Because there isn't a fee. We haven't charged the fee in the past. I don't know the Brookview details, but all other sites, according to conversations I've had with staff, is we haven't charged a fee. Contractors use our parkland for our neighborhood construction projects, and we don't charge a fee there. We just require them to do restoration, and that's what was drafted in this new thing. But we, this one's requiring even more warranty.
Where's the restoration language?
In the new one, under...
L is, L is, but that is Sidell's property, lot eight.
Right.
That's not the public property that we've got over there in the corner. That's what I think, I thought Member Bennett was talking about. If they're going to access that little, I'll call it a park, that common public space over there, and use that space to access lot seven, where's the restoration language for that?
Don't we call that little corner one lot?
Oh, we call it open space six.
Open space six.
A comprehensive plan, it's classified as open space, and that's...
But just to clearly identify it.
We had never referred to it as open space six before, a couple, a month ago. It had never been referred to as open space.
So am I not referring to it as that? I'm just trying to be clear as to what we want brought back to its original condition. And this is right, it does say, "Developer shall grade lot eight."
Yeah.
We could add, we could add the...
So I don't care what they do with lot eight, that's Sidell's problem.
That's Sidell's, yeah.
What I care about is what happens to the open space at the corner that I refer to as open space six.
Crocker and...
So...
We could amend that to open space number six.
Open space at Crocker and Littles.
Lynn and Littles.
Lynn and Littles.
Lynn and Littles, excuse me, Lynn and Littles.
So upon completion of grading, the developer shall reestablish the turf on the property on the corner of, public property on the corner of Lynn and Littles.
Well, I think you want reference to more than turf, because there are mature trees there as well. If there's damage to anything, it should be replaced or fixed.
Why don't we just direct the city attorney to add that language to the developer agreement instead of trying to craft it here?
Okay.
Sure.
Roger, if you get the gist?
And then a correction, correction of the reference to the lot?
We're not going to charge them a fee, but you're going to have to, you want them to regrade.
We're going to make them restore.
Right, including any damage to trees, and it's not, "Developer shall grade lot eight," because we don't care about lot eight.
So it's got to refer to the right lot.
We need to, we need to check that legal description.
Eight can stay in there, that must be the part of the bargain they struck with Sidell's.
I don't know, because if we've changed all the other references to lots one through seven, so I don't know.
No, this is not part of the plat. Lot eight, block three, Crocker and Crowell's addition, first edition is not part of the plat.
Lot eight is not part of, right.
So is that our public space?
No, that's Frank's lot.
We think, we'll have to check, but that legal description did not get changed from what was there before.
Right, it was lot eight before, it's lot eight now, but the conditions of approval refer to lots seven.
All right, somebody in the back want to come up here? One of the... Identify yourself, please.
Mr. Mayor, Brian McCool with Frederickson &amp; Byer, and I'm a real estate attorney that's representing City Homes.
Thanks, Mr. McCool.
Lot eight, block three is not the Sidell's property. That's the, that is the city's lot. It's in the Crocker, Crowell's addition, that's a different platted lot.
Okay.
Lot, yeah, it's confusing. Lot eight, Acres Dubois, is the Sidell's property. So this is a different lot eight.
But there's never been a change in grade to that lot approved by this body in conjunction with that project?
To which lot?
Lot eight, if that's what you're referring to as the public, the public open spaces, lot eight.
Well, I think the public approval, the approval process talks about lot seven. I wasn't here at that point. I think that the contemplation was that lot.
So if they're not talking about regrading lot eight, they're talking about going across lot eight to regrade, to do the grading for one to seven?
Well, no, now they are talking about grading. The original, the original agreement, okay, so the original agreement said...
I think it's just semantics.
Said must obtain a license agreement for use of, and this says shall grade.
I understand that. I think...
So license and then restoration duty?
So Roger, we need to make it clear that our property, the city property, is not being regraded, but if it is used to be crossed to be for grading, no?
The preliminary plans?
I think it is being graded.
Part of the initial approval, if you could zoom in on it. Here's the grading plan. If you zoom in to right there, that's open space number six or lot eight of the first edition. In order to construct the sanitary sewer line to Littles and the water main, we need to grade just a slight piece of that lot. So this was in with the approvals at council on February 18th. So this is the grading, the turf establishment. This lot itself is being raised six to 12 feet in elevation, so there's a slight raise in order to tie all those contours in on this very west property edge to get the sewer infrastructure pipes in place that the developer is installing to get sewer and water, or sewer established up in this development.
So when I'm looking at the lines of that, what is the highest point of public land?
It's roughly 880, and it's going up...
And what is the highest point of lot eight on the Sidell property? On that lot?
Lot seven is 884. Right next to it, so there's a four-foot difference in grade between the building and the grading limit to the property line.
So ours is 880 and theirs is 884?
Yep, it goes uphill four feet to the structure.
So they are adding...
They are adding, they're at 872, they're adding 12 feet of fill to this lot.
What happens, I don't understand what happens to the runoff then if our, if our corner lot is lower than?
The runoff will be treated up in a stormwater vault up on a pier.
How do you capture the runoff down there and send it up the hill?
Well, you don't. This will be sent into either way. So down here in the Sidell property, there's a low area, so the water will be split half and half.
Then I'm confused why we're taking water from a lot they're adding 12 feet to.
They could put a small infiltration device, a small infiltration chamber on that lot.
And we're working through those final plans now.
Okay, well, that, I have a problem with that. If they're going to add, and why is that, is that lot seven, where's the one that they're holding for the Sidell family?
Right there, that little swale, the swale next to their house.
Oh, that, okay.
Also labeled eight, hence the confusion over what's eight.
Okay.
Or numbered eight.
Your honor?
Okay.
I want to just make sure the council knows, we're looking at an approved plan.
I know.
You've already approved this?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, but the wording was not necessarily very clear, because...
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, then I still am worried about it. I may have approved it, but I'm still worried about it.
Is there anything that's changed about the, with regard to the drainage, even though the grading plan is the same?
No, everything drainage rise is the same as was approved in February.
It kind of drains the same way it does now.
Correct.
Either goes into that swale behind Sidell's, or it goes into the swale of the park.
And all the additional runoff created by impervious surface up from lots up on, up on top of the hill one through six are going to be held in a stormwater vault underneath the road up in that area.
When they go to construct a house, when City Homes goes to construct a house on that lot adjacent to our lot eight, that'll give us another chance to deal with the drainage issue, I take it, in terms of making them manage water on their site?
Yep, we'll review all those plans.
Okay. All right. So we're asking him to grade lot eight, which is the common space, in accordance with the approved grading plan?
Or allowing them to, yeah. I think we want more than turf restored, just in case. I mean, in case there's any damage, we want anything that's damaged restored.
Or replaced.
Yes, restored or replaced.
Okay, have you got some modified language there, Member Bennett?
Well, instead of reestablished turf, restore the public land, because it, contemplated that they'll be, that's, they're not just going to be accessing the land at that point, they're going to be accessing at other points. So if no fee structure has been developed for this, at least I believe this body's been consistent in requiring restoration to existing conditions. Well, we could say that, restore the public land...
Yeah, you could say, to its former condition, to its pre-construction condition, and establish turf on the graded property in accordance with blah, blah, blah. I think those standards for turf are good, and the warranty is good.
And then, rather than turf, warranted of, alive of good quality and disease-free all plantings instead of turf? Because then if there's any damage to a shrub or tree, that covers it as well.
Yeah, but I don't know if a planting, if turf is a planting.
No, I said, oh, all turf, all plantings and turf.
Oh, okay, I thought you said, I thought you were substituting.
I was, but I take your point. And then any replacement plantings or turf, any replant, any replaced plantings...
Or...
And turf shall be warranted for 12 months from time of planting. So it's two sentences right now, and we've just changed it, both sentences consistently.
All right, so we got those changes on L. You want to, you want to read those changes, Member Bennett, so that...
Yes.
They can get them at the staff level?
Okay. It will read, "Developer shall grade lot eight, block three, Crocker and Crowell's first edition, in accordance with the approved grading plan. Upon completion of grading, the developer shall restore the public land to its pre-construction condition and establish turf on the graded property in accordance with the Minnesota Department of Transportation specifications for highway construction, 2014 edition. All plantings and turf shall be warranted to be alive of good quality and disease-free for 12 months after planting. Any replacement plantings and turf shall be warranted for 12 months from the time of planting."
Okay. All right, any other changes, Director Milner?
No.
All right. With that clarification and the other change we made, what was the other paragraph? It was...
Page nine, item E.
Yeah, page nine, E. Is there a motion?
So move.
Got a motion in the second with the changes noted to approve the development contract with City Homes Development LLC for the Acres Dubois development. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those say nay, carried. Congratulations, and thank you for coming up for that clarification, that was helpful. All right, we are on to correspondence and petitions. Anything other than what we had on the dais this evening, Manager Neil? Aviation noise update, either Manager Neil or Member Bennett, or both?
I would like to back up to correspondence for just one second. We had a letter from a resident near Fred Richards who is concerned about some possible relocation of the Nine Mile Creek trail route. And I corresponded earlier today with Parks Director Ann Katra, and she assured me that although Nine Mile, Three Rivers Park District had been interested in possibly using the city sidewalk that was constructed, staff has advised them that that is not available and that they should be pulling the trail in that more gradual curve, not hugging the south line of the existing golf course as previously, but a more gradual curve up to Park Lawn.
but a more gradual curve up to Park Lawn, per the approved, per the council discussion. And just wanted that to be put into the record. Then also, Mayor directed to you a communication petition from Yorktown Commons regarding the condition of the sidewalk in front of their property, and I wonder if that can be referred to staff for investigation and possible remediation.
So, Councilmember Bennett, where is it now?
In front of Yorktown Commons.
On York, but, I mean, there's, was there a petition, is that what you said?
Well, it was in the correspondence packet. It was in the form of a letter that was signed on the back by a number of residents.
Okay, we'll take it.
Okay.
All right, aviation noise update.
Manager Neil, do you have it?
I don't, I don't have one.
Okay, there is a meeting tomorrow. The meetings begin at 1:30 PM at the MAC offices on 28th Street. Anyone wishing to speak should be in contact with Edina's representative as an at-large city, who is John Bergman, council member from Apple Valley. Then, then Greater Public Input Opportunity is on Tuesday, October 28th, 2014. And this is at the Metropolitan Airports Commission General Office again on 28th. There was a public input meeting this summer held in Mendota Heights, and they do rotate around.
Let's go back to the Tuesday, October...
Tuesday, October 28th.
28th.
7:00 PM.
Okay.
And then tomorrow, the noise...
And that's a knock, that's the knock one where you have to register to speak, but you don't have to be supported by your...
Yes, you can sign in, and in fact, they do have a fairly open style of asking if there's anyone else who has not signed in who wishes to speak. It's often that questions are not answered on the spot, but are responded to in writing after the meeting. But it is a very good opportunity for people to both express their concerns and hear the concerns that are held by people in other communities. And then there is some, a public comment period open on, I believe it's decibel level, and we will be working on, on comment as a city for that.
We are.
Great.
With the city of Minneapolis.
Wonderful.
Good, thank you. Before we proceed with Mayor and council comments, we've got a proclamation that we need to take care of for Constitution Week. The proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas it is the privilege of all Americans to commemorate the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America, the appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuance of a proclamation by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Therefore, I James be humbled by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Atlanta to hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on their privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves." Is there a motion?
So moved.
Allow me to sign that proclamation? Motion to second, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. And now, council comments, I think it's Member Brindle.
All right, I have three. The I-494 Corridor Commission. The I-494 Corridor Commission is a lobbying group that works on, of several cities along 494. And, and we look at projects along 494 and how well traffic flows or doesn't along 494. One aspect of this group is the 494 commuter services. And they have been extremely successful at encouraging employers along 494 to, to put commuter programs in place for their employees. Best Buy, for example, Normandale Community College, for another example. There are van pools and encouraging car pools, alternative transportation, with the goal of decreasing the number of vehicles on I-494, especially during peak times. So, I'm just making kind of a blanket announcement that, that the commuter services staff will meet with staff at your company, for all those listeners out there, if you would like to know more about carpooling, van pooling, alternative transportation methods, so that your employees can contribute to reducing the number of cars on 494. So, 494corridor.org for more information. And then Southwest Beyond the Yellow Ribbon continues to meet monthly. And this is a network of four cities, supporting veterans and family, military families in our communities. And just another announcement that if, if you are a military family and you have needs, go ahead and go to the website, SWTCbeyondtheyellowribbon.org. And you can request services. And you can also, if you're someone who would like to volunteer, you can also enter your information and tell them what you'd like to do, whether it's snow shoveling, or raking leaves, or helping out with household things. And, but that information can be put right into that website. And then, as requests come in for assistance, then you can be notified. And then, the first weekend of September, September 6th and 7th, was the Fall into the Arts Art Fair at Centennial Lakes. It was well attended. I have it on good authority that this Saturday and Sunday, both beautiful sunny days, was the first weekend since the month of May, where we had two consecutive weekend sunny days. So, we enjoyed it. There were more than 200 artists from as far away as Montana, New Mexico, and Missouri, who were part of that art fair. So, we greatly appreciate all of the efforts from volunteers, from the artists, from city staff members to make the event a success again this year. It was beautiful. And a special shout-out to Centennial Lakes staff. They just, the park was just absolutely beautiful the entire weekend. And as art fairs go, this is one that has no traffic issues because there are no streets that people have to deal with. So, the artists just love this one, and the setting can't be beat. So, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Just, thanks to staff for visioning Edina. I thought it was well-planned. It was delightful to see so many new faces, and also to see the range of ages and backgrounds in the room. I think that was very well done. Heard a lot of good comments about it.
Thank you.
I have two items tonight. One is directed towards Manager Neil and...
Excuse me.
And Ms. Bederat. I would like us to work with the school district ahead of time before the homecoming parade. We were not allowed to be in it and throw the footballs that we threw a year ago, so we do have 500 wonderful Hornet footballs waiting. And I actually was standing on the sidelines watching the parade, and I had numerous neighborhood kids that had caught them last year and wondered where they were. I'm really disappointed not to be part of it. I think it's really important that the city participate in that. And I know it wasn't the city's fault, I'm not blaming you guys. But could we work together with the school district and overcome whatever issue they had this year so that it doesn't happen again?
We can try.
Yeah. And then, to Director Teague, for Southdale one, do you have an update on the sidewalk that's supposed to go from the apartments to the Southdale building physically? And then, do they know that they really can't get a certificate of occupancy for their last building if they don't have that sidewalk built? And I certainly don't, would not accept the fact that it's winter and they can't build it because it's winter, then they can't occupy their building until it's spring, when the sidewalk is done. So, I want them to understand that, that that sidewalk was a very important part. I know when we talked about visioning and walkability, again, it was stress that Millennials and other people really want that walkability, and we intentionally built that into that project. So, where are they on that sidewalk?
Staff has been working with them to come up with a plan, as you recall. I believe it may have been even your condition that talked about the...
It was.
Getting the sidewalk in there.
I do have a personal interest in it, but I have support from my fellow.
Right, so they were working on, how can we do this and still manage to save the trees instead of putting it down the middle?
And I'm good with saving the trees.
Yep, so, so I think they've come up with a plan to do that. They're gonna expand that median to put the sidewalk alongside of the trees.
Okay.
So, it would be a raised curb with the sidewalk adjacent to the trees, so it'll get a little bigger.
Okay, and do they understand the importance of getting it finished before they want to occupy their final building?
We can, that was staff's intention, was to not issue a CO because they're, it's not completed yet. But it's my understanding that they, that they, we've agreed to this alternative, and it was my understanding that they're gonna get started on it.
Thank you for that update.
Members, break.
I'm up. We got some correspondence from a resident in the Parkwood Knowles neighborhood about a sewer backup. And I just want to make sure that we get back to them about how are we gonna respond? I mean, this, this was a 100-year extraordinary event. But how are we gonna respond next time and make sure we have adequate staffing to be more responsive to residents? I don't know who we may or may not have on call, but I think there's an opportunity for improvement in the future. And then, inform them about any possible standalone projects on stormwater capacity or management that would, that would affect them. And then also on some general preventive methods that homeowners can take to protect themselves other than getting additional insurance coverage. They, they included sewer backup causes and prevention from, adopted from, looks like the city of Champlain, Champaign, Illinois. And I thought this was a nice educational piece that might, we might make available in some form to residents like this as well.
Note the line in, it's in the content of the, where it says, "Except for cases of severe storms," or, I mean, it's, I, I, that...
Right.
Catch my eye. I mean, obviously, we are dealing with much more significant rainfall per event than we have in the past.
And then also how our change coverage will impact them in the future. And then, we were talking about sod and seed earlier, and we've been going through this for a couple of years now. And at some point, I'd like to revisit how effective our policy is of doing this hydroseed. Does it rise to the quality level that our residents expect, that we expect, especially in, in more traveled corridors where it's even more visible to members of the public? I'd like to have that conversation as a council.
I thought that was part of the fact that we were using hydroseed was we were gonna revisit it after this, this, this year of, because we were going on a different schedule for it and how it got done and watered and the amount, correct?
It takes, it takes longer to, to...
To germinate?
Yes, to establish, but...
One of the very important things is the condition of the underlying soil. And I think in places like 44th Street, I think where people have said this is an example of how it worked really well, and now on 42nd, even though it hasn't been seeded, the dirt is, it's great. It's great soil, and I anticipate that it will be successful along 42nd as well because of what the contractor has put down, or staff has put down.
And again, 70th Street was an example of where it hadn't worked out. And I know you're working on a plan to, to redo a portion of that corridor.
Yeah, I met, I presented where we were with hydroseeding last winter, the spring, and said I'd come back, and, and my plan was to come back the night of the special assessment hearings and give a hydroseed update. I could do that at the next meeting if you prefer to have that before the assessment hearing on the 7th. But, yeah, we're, we're looking at that, we're reviewing that. We've met with many landscapers and see if that's still the appropriate policy going forward, the pluses and minuses of sod versus seed. And we're going with it.
Perfect. And then, was down at Southdale today and thinking about, once the France Avenue project is done, what are the necessary or the, the natural corollaries of projects? And Park Lawn has a tremendous amount of pedestrian foot traffic coming across there. I know you're, you're planning on doing a transportation study for Southdale, correct?
It's in the CIP.
Okay, so assuming that's approved, then that's gonna be a critical link. Park Lawn, Gallagher, 69th, and then also that connecting sidewalk from Valley View to France on the south side of 66th. Again, it's just kind of part of that whole network. In addition, as you mentioned, Southdale, how do we make those penetrations so that that barrier, the Southdale parking lot, becomes more, more pervious for residents and people to reach? And they've done some striping and other things, but I think we gotta keep pushing that conversation forward to make sure we get the, the right result.
Well, what we've done on France is, is getting people's attention because I was with a group of Southwest Minneapolis women the other night, and she commented on this wonderful sidewalks that we were putting in around Southdale, and all the people she saw walking on them. So, I forgot, I was gonna pass that on, so there is, there are no...
The other, the other thing, Mayor, you and I have talked about this before, is when we're doing roundabouts and we have an urban design element, I know that we've had some donated rocks that are really beautiful, but we're relying on our engineering consultants to do the landscaping plans. We really never see it. And then, are we getting what, what we want, what we see, we envisioned as a council for that area, kind of a marquee look, or some type of consistent look throughout the greater Southdale area? I don't think we're getting that. And I think it's because we haven't, we haven't chosen to be a part of that and, and figure out if we want to set some standards out for those projects in the future or to maybe, future projects, and then we look at how our, the past roundabouts could be done to synchronize with what our future urban design plan is for the area. But I think it's important for, when you look at landscaping and how it impacts the final product, the aesthetic element, and, and the signature elements that we're looking for, for our town, I think we have to insert ourselves and have some standards and not just rely on our, on our standalone engineering consultant to get there.
I think you've touched on the, a possible methodology, and that is to lead with urban design, don't lead with engineering.
Yeah.
And, and if you lead with urban design, then you'll have those elements and that we, that we think are important, and the rest would just fall into place from an engineering standpoint, I believe.
So, how do we, how do we get, get to that? I don't know if it's no...
I think it's an internal...
I just heard what you said. You'll let us know.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think we just need to have a policy of leading with urban design.
Yeah.
And then, what I'm a little bit concerned about out there on France Avenue, sorry, were you finished?
No, keep on...
Yeah, is, the, the event that Member Swenson and I attended at the Hopkins Performing Arts Center, the woman talked about density and, you know, the more urban design elements of, of living. Landscaping is such, as you point out, such a critical element that I'm a little bit concerned on the east side of France Avenue that we're gonna, we're gonna make that as beautiful as it should be to create an environment where people are going to be comfortable walking for distance instead of just walking by a wall, or walking by a big open parking lot. Even though there's a nice sidewalk there, if the environment around it isn't done right, I think we're missing something important there.
If it's too sterile.
I think what we've worked really hard on doing is as each piece of that gets redone, and a number of it has, Starbucks started it with their grasses and everything. And then we talked to Whole Foods about it, we did talk to Byerly's about it. You know, eventually, I assume Macy's Home Store may make a change, the big bank that has the field. I think those are all the things that happen, and then we talk about it. Because what you and I saw was that actually walking by a building is way more pleasant than walking by a giant empty field. Walking by a building that has some art in it is good. Walking by just one piece of art doesn't do it. So, it, it's that urban look again, but I think we get that opportunity every time something gets rebuilt.
And part of it is budgetary, I know that, that we can improve the landscaping over time, but it just...
We, we could take, I mean, I'm thinking about the roundabouts. We could take our combined budgets though and say, this is the placemaking look we want. And we're gonna replicate it from this piece of public design to another, so it's not, so it's connected. You look at 70th Street between France and York... You look at 70th Street between France and York, how it feels to walk through that corridor. Maybe we start with that and we say, okay, we're going to push that out to these other places. Because we don't have a cohesive urban design plan and so it's ad hoc, I think.
Yeah. So to me, that's a great starting point. It's a great touchstone for landscape architecture out there. And I'm hoping that what occurs in the median on France Avenue with the new expanded median matches up with what we got between, on 70th, between France and York. And so that it is consistent and has that cohesive feel to it. So we'll see.
That's it.
What else?
All right. So we had John Wallen's retirement party on the 6th, the day after our council met last time. We actually got him to, there was a slight upturn of his mouth on the corners, he was a little bit happy. Maybe that meant he was really happy, I'm not sure.
He was really happy.
He gave a very pleasant sort of departure talk. Wasn't long, but very earnest and heartfelt and it was, it was sweet. And so he and his wife, we wish him the best, Darlene, who worked here for years. Vision 2020, or excuse me, Vision Edina, we mentioned that, that Future IQ facilitator for the visioning session did an excellent job. So thank you to staff for that. The homecoming parade, I can maybe provide a little enlightenment for Member Swenson. I was told, as I rode in the car with the superintendent, because it was an election year, no council members were allowed to participate. It made me think of, two years ago when I ran, they wouldn't let me be in the parade. So everybody got tarred with the election brush on the council and I didn't. I mean, it's a little bit inconsistent, but I can't tell you.
She could have gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
Member Brendel and Member Swenson weren't up for election.
I've got a good arm. I might not be as good as him, but I could have done that. As long as two years ago they didn't let you go, I'm comfortable with, then I'm more comfortable than with that decision because there's a potential conflict that I won't discuss this year during the election and I would hope that wasn't the reason, but the fact that they've been consistent in it gives me some satisfaction. Thank you.
Something called Rail Evolution starts on Sunday. It's a conference, a nationwide conference, happens to be in Minneapolis this year. And I've never been before, but I'm going to be able to go on behalf of one of the regional transportation organizations I'm part of. So they've signed me up and I'll try to report out on that as I go to different events. And then Braemar 50th Anniversary Party, the night of the 26th, I believe, of September. And we will have our new master plan architect here from Pinehurst, North Carolina, who just completed a beautiful project for Ramsey County and the city of Maplewood over at Keller Golf Course, historic Keller Golf Course over on the east side. And we had some great candidates and he stood out for everybody, I think, in terms of his preparation, his attention to the history of Braemar. It was, it was quite impressive. And so he'll be here next week, from Wednesday on, working with folks, various interest groups, touring the course, trying to get a better understanding of what people think is important. You remember, we said we wanted to drive the agenda here in terms of having the architect work for us and capture our vision. And I think he'll do a good job of it. Richard Mandell is his name. So he's one of the up and comers in the golf industry. And that's it for me. Oh. The, there were some, there were some interesting comments made by some of our fellow residents tonight. I mean, some legitimate concerns over drainage and then, and then the concern from the gentleman...
Grass?
Yeah, the Groces, of course, but then the other fellow, my notes here. Right. Yeah. So I think somebody's already raised the slip seeding issue and I, you know, I know you're working on this, but it was disturbing to see those photos. And this drainage issue that the Groces have raised is really important. So what's, what's going on there?
Well, staff in both cases, staff are actively working with both, with both homeowners and property owners on both of those questions.
All right. Thank you.
And they'll continue to.
And they can, will continue to.
Thank you.
The Bachmann's, whatever, it was announced on the news that it's now time stop seeding. On September 15th, I'm, as a gardener, I want to keep moving my plants around till the last minute, but we're just having too, the nights are too cool. So they said you could still put down sod, but that seed would no, it's no longer warm enough for seed to germinate.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll start with the good news. We were informed yesterday, maybe yesterday, that we will receive $625,000 from the Department of Employment and Economic Development for the Pentagon Revival Project. So that project, that will go to assisting the demolition activities and redevelopment activities of Pentagon Park. When Deed made this award announcement, they announced four projects, two in Minneapolis, one in Mankato, and of course, the one in Edina. And ours was the largest of the, of the four that they announced through their redevelopment grant program. Another recognition, I think, from both the state government and Met Council on the importance of the redevelopment of this site. Just a couple of things to make sure you are aware of on just your calendars. We need to set, and we have set, and we need to make sure that you are, have also set, December 9th at 6:00 PM is the night we will do our street reconstruction project meeting that night for special assessments. We have a groundbreaking for the Vets Memorial.
Wait a minute, let's go back, Tuesday, December 9th, at what time?
Starting at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Friday at 9:00 AM, we have the Vets Memorial groundbreaking and you're all invited to that. December 5th is a Friday evening and that is the, this is a save the date note for that. The grand opening and dedication event for the Braemar Field and associated outdoor ice rink will be that night. More coming on that.
December 5th, 6 o'clock, right? 6 o'clock?
Yes. No time yet, but it'll be an evening.
Maybe I just put it in to hold it.
It's an evening event.
It's an evening event. No, actually it wasn't. I, I have trouble with my calendar when you don't give me a time.
We'll, we'll give you a time. This is, this is the save the date notice, right?
Okay.
A couple of you have, have already said some words about Vision Edina and the two events that we had last week. I want to let you know that Karen Kurt, Heather Brannigan, and Lindy Crawford from, from the admin office really put in considerable effort to kind of pull that together. And, and I think it came off really well. I've heard many, many good comments about it and people who enjoyed, enjoyed the evening came back for another one on Thursday night and I think we were pretty satisfied with how, how things went. Final thing I'll tell you is, is I woke up this morning in Charlotte, North Carolina and after spending three days at the 100th, 100th anniversary of the International City Management Association Conference, and I got to spend three days there at the conference this year. It's still going on, but setting a tax levy is kind of important, so I came home early for that. But I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate the support that the council gives to not only me, but the support that you give to, to other staff for professional development and how important it is to, to sort of get out of, get out of the office and sharpen the saw, as it's said sometimes. And I had a chance to do that for three days and it was a great experience and happy to do it and happy to have your support to do it. So thank you for that.
You made me nervous, sir. I thought you woke up in another town and didn't know why you were there, the way you were starting.
I didn't know how to start that, but, but happy to have been there. It's a nice town. It reminds me a little bit, a bit of Minneapolis, actually, their downtown does, so. But it was hot and sticky, so I'm happy to be back here.
I'm just sending a photo of you to Ms. Benarot from the outdoor rink.
Oh, yes.
Send your email. I don't know if it's worth putting up, it's probably worth putting up a screen. It's quite a photo of our new outdoor ice rink.
Gives you a sense of scale.
And construction.
And it will have ice, it will have ice that night, so it'll be, so it'll be ready to skate on.
Good. And behind our faithful observer, Mr. Stewart, back there is Mr. Rick Idis, who is the Chair of the Task Force for the Braemar Master Plan Work. So I, I missed you there earlier. Thank you for all your great work that you did in leading our task force to this result, so.
Don't make it sound like he's done.
No, he's not. We're, we were...
Be careful, that's not the past tense now.
Yeah, no, we were on the phone, 7:30 Monday morning for another phone conference, so.
I got a chance to speak with him again, myself, and I'm, I like the vision they're developing for Braemar as in all abilities, facility that also will have some additional general public uses and access because it is an absolutely beautiful piece of land, even if you're not a golfer. So I'm grateful for his leadership and pointing us in the right direction. And I think a lot of, a lot of juniors, men and women, and just a lot of different parts of the golf community are going to be well served by this new facility. So thank you.
So Jennifer, did you find that picture? Do we have time before we adjourn?
Look at that.
That's impressive.
You should go...
Is that impressive?
Yeah, that is impressive. You should go down to Courtney Fields and see the backside of that retaining wall. It's massive.
I did, I know. I sat at a baseball game there on...
So that's the same look of that retaining wall you see kind of behind me at the end?
It's very handsome.
This is going to be just a fabulous community amenity.
Totally.
People are going to love spending time outside. It'll have that outdoor fireplace at the far end there. People can gather between periods. It'll be wonderful.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Are we done?
We are done.
Okay.
Standing adjourned, thank you.
No, that's okay because I knew my...
They have skylights, yeah, they let light in.